I'd like to call an order. We're going down to the workshop meeting. And I have to ask.
Recording in progress.
Excuse me? Can you hear me? Can y'all hear me now? There you go. There you go. Okay. I want to, um, thank you for coming tonight to the workshop meeting. Um, first thing is, let's please stand and sit, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands as one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, does anybody like to come up and say a brief prayer? If not, we'll just stand in silence and pray. Thank you. Okay. Thank you. Um, a couple things real quick, just to remind everybody. See, um, hello. I'm new to this, so this ought to be fun. So, um, anyway, um, I want to remind everybody, we will have comments from the audience. Those comments will be first and last. Uh, you'll have three minutes to talk. Please direct those comments to the, um, to the chair, and we'll go from there. Mandy, could you call up?
Yes, sir. Vice Mayor Don?
Yes, here.
Councilwoman Meldelso?
Here.
Councilwoman Anske?
Here.
Councilwoman Tobbich?
Present.
Dan Smith, Finance Officer?
Here.
Troy Slaughter, Public Works Manager?
Here.
Michelle Leonard, Assistant Clerk?
Here.
Chief McQuaid?
Here.
Lieutenant Yawts?
Here.
And we have Kelly Nguyen, uh, Lyon, the Planning Assistant and Community Development?
Here.
City Attorney Andrew Hand?
I'm here.
The agenda for this meeting was posted on the city's website and City Hall Bulletin Board on Wednesday, February 1st, 2023.
Um, again, the first thing on the agenda is other comments. If you have any comments you'd like to share with all of us, we appreciate it. We will be limited to three minutes, and where did we lose the... Oh, we're still over it. Um, there's a clock over there that keeps up with three minutes, so if you don't mind, try to follow that as best you can. Thank you. Do we have anybody signed up, Mandy?
Only at the end of the meeting unless they meant to sign up for the end of the meeting. Rex, Rex Lehman?
Yeah, right.
You want to wait till the end, or you want to...
No, I'd rather do it now because my dog's sick and I want to...
Okay. Yes, so go ahead.
Members of the council, in the audience, my name is Rex Lehman. I live at 21230 Blackwood Drive. I've lived in Dan Allen for 14 months, and there's a vacant seat in the council, and I would like to bring it to your attention and respectfully request that I be considered to fill that seat. I moved up here very quickly from Palmetto Bay. Our residence was a village of about 26,000 people. I was fairly active in politics down there, trying to get people in to forestall the development that was coming. I got fed up with the fact that they would say, yes, we're anti-development, and then as soon as you would, they would get in, the developers would get to them, and suddenly you've got eight, nine, 10-story high rises going in. There would be 200 people in a room saying, no, they would have their three shields come up and say, this is the greatest thing, and vote five, death, zero. And to run for the council down there, it cost about $35,000 to $40,000. It was a process. Everywhere I've gone in my life, I've been fed up. And when I moved into Dan Allen, I already know everybody in my neighborhood. When I want to become a part of a community, and I listened to what you've all said the first couple meetings that I've come here about why you got elected, I want to be a part of that because I listen to all of you, and you talk about wanting to do things for people and to make this a showcase community. Not a showcase, but a place that reflects the greatness of the people that live here. And the hardest thing to do in any organization is not money, it's getting people to work and participate to make things happen, and I want to be a part of that. I am a Toastmaster. I ran in, well, 30 years ago, I started the West Kendall Toastmasters. That club survived for 30 years, and was one of the premier Toastmasters clubs down there, and I taught people how to speak. I ran the district for a year. So, and finally, I worked for City Miami Fire Rescue for 32 years. I spent 24 as a lieutenant, and now I'm up here. And I'd really like to be considered as somebody to work on the council. I've talked to a lot of you. I like the way, I like your demeanor, I like what you have to say, and I like your vision. And it takes more people working for the vision of everybody than people working for the vision, for the vision of themselves to make something work, and that's what I want to be a part of. So I would really request your consideration.
Okay. Good. Good. All right. Does anybody else like to speak before the meeting, or would you rather speak?
I have Amber Srinas on that.
I'll wait.
You want to wait to begin?
Wait to begin, okay. All right. Is no one, is anybody online, um, Mandy, who wants to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Um, we're going to do one thing, if you'll pardon me, um, kind of out of order, um, and then we'll follow the agenda as written. I would like to discuss item six first, uh, because it's probably on everybody's mind is let's just go ahead and talk about it and kind of understand, uh, the process and what's going to happen. Then after that, we'll go back to the agenda and follow it. Okay? Mandy, you want to run this, or you want me to?
Um, well, I, I can introduce it. You can elaborate.
All right, do that.
Um, so what I've done is prepared a vacancy notice for council's consideration. If you choose to fill the vacancy through appointment, um, that was provided with the agenda, and it's in the backup. And it basically just, um, gives notice that there's a vacant seat, um, and, uh, we're selecting people, um, seeking interested, qualified, uh, electors system and application to fill the unexpired term. Set it up so that, uh, if you do not choose to have a special election, um, the person would fill the vacancy until November 2024, city council election. Um, it gives the charter provision, uh, if we, if we go this route and we publish it, uh, next Friday in the Riverland, we, if we get it in by tomorrow, it can go in next Friday. And set a deadline of February the 27th, um, which is when we would be publishing the March workshop agenda. So that would be the deadline to receive those applications so that they could be published along with that, um, council agenda. What I've also provided is, um, an application for you to review. If you're good with this application, we can go ahead and get it published, uh, to the website. And basically, it just asks some basic information, name, address, phone number, email, or your resident, because you do have to be a qualified elector within the city limits to qualify for the seat. If employed by whom, professional and, um, experience and education, that they would, you know, qualify them for the position. Um, and just some basic questions, and then some, uh, requirements to fill out the Form 1 and that sort of thing. So they're all, any applicants are aware of what their responsibilities are as a council person. Um, I did contact the supervisor of elections about, uh, what it would cost to hold a special election independent of the county election, and it's estimated at $4,788.76.
And the other option is, of course, having an election.
Right.
Not just letting the council make that decision.
Um, that is an option.
Right. Anybody on the council want to make a comment or discuss that?
I'll refrain from comment right now.
Okay.
Well, maybe I won't.
Okay, you can mic up your mic.
Uh, is the vice mayor interested in that seat?
Uh, right now, um, I am interested in that seat. But whether, uh, listen, I won't know until right before the 27th, but there's a possibility I will do it.
Okay.
I'm really going to wait and try to see who else is doing that. And, and of course, I know where you're going is, I think I do, is if I do that, then my seat becomes up.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
I'm done. Thank you.
Andrew Hand, in our attorney, and I had a conversation, and I thought you told me that since we were elected for a four-year term, we would have to stay and serve that and not move into the mayor's seat. That would not be allowed, um, because in our char, city charter?
No, no. What I said actually has happened in the past, that there have been resignations to move into that seat. So what would happen if, if a current member of the council was interested in moving into the mayor's seat? What would happen in that case? They would have to resign sometime prior to, um, appointment, then they could be appointed to that seat. Now, what would happen with their existing seat if, uh, if you had a seat that was open until, that normally would, um, turn over in 2026, then that seat would also, it would then become 2024. If there was no, and this is, of course, in the case of no special election. So in other words, a seat that normally would be an election year in 2026 would become 2024 if that was empty because that would be the next election, and hence need to be filled. But no, there is nothing that prevents any member of council resigning from their seat at any point in time, in which case they become like any other member of the general public. And if there was a, an appointment, um, you know, to be made, they certainly could be considered.
It was possible that we could have three people for, um, up for election then?
Um, if, if I recall correctly, this year there were, there were three, right? Uh, and so normally, under normal circumstances, I believe in 2024 it would be two. But if a member, and it depends, because I think the seats run right now, there's the one seat that turns over, I have to look at all the dates because I don't want to confuse it. But if, yes, in, in the case that it is somebody who is appointed who, um, would be 2026, for instance, the, uh, the vice mayor, then that would be three seats that would be open in that case in 2024, just like there were this year. That was one of the things I looked at, um, actually today, just to see if there would be a, an instance where there were four seats, because that has also happened in the past. But no, it would be three seats.
Thank you.
Julianne?
I hope I'm following all this. So one of my questions would be, um, depending who applies to go for seat one by the end of the month, um, if then another seat became vacant because of that, would the people who showed interest in seat one be eligible to walk on to the open seat?
We, we talked about this a little bit, and my suggestion would be, um, to advertise the vacancy again.
I see.
Because you're, I think with the mayor's seat, you're going to get a limited pool of applicants because not so many people want to be mayor necessarily, but you might get a larger pool of applicants for just a regular council seat.
Understood. So then, after determining seat one, then we would do the process again, provide perhaps another month, and get applicants for the council seat.
That would be my suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, I want to go back, if you don't mind, Andrew, because I've heard both ways. If, if I decide to run, and the question I had asked was, do I have to resign my seat to run for an appointment? And was first told yes, and then told no? And then if I didn't win the, uh, race for mayor by appointment, that I would retain my seat? Is that not true?
I guess I could, I can make it clear. It, it's not a race. In other words, there's a vacancy that needs to be filled. What you can't have is you can't have dual office holding, you can't be sitting in two seats at the same token. So, you know, the way that, to look at it would be, if you're expressing interest in that seat, you can certainly have a consensus or gather that discussion, you know, and see what support there would be in the council to move into that seat. But you would need to resign from your current seat before moving into that other seat at some point. It can actually be just moments before. So there's no requirement that there's a resign-to-run type period, because it's not an electoral race, it's an appointment.
Okay.
But there can't be any overlap.
I get...
It can be 30 seconds before, but it just, there has to be that, that break.
This is what's really been helping, making me make this decision. First, I was told no, I would have to resign, and what was bothering me is if I did do that, and say I did it on February 27th, we don't have to move to the council until we had whatever selection of about three members for mayor, and then we'd have to turn around and do the same thing again. But it, there was four members of the council, say, the first meeting in March, and then I, of course, recused myself from any voting or whatever, but then I just resigned if I'm fortunate enough to win. If I'm not, then nothing really happens to me. I just stay in the seat.
I wasn't quite following at the end about how that kind of worked as, as far as when the resignation occurs, but really, I think what, what you could do is gather consensus that, hey, the council's interested in having, seeing who they're interested in putting in that seat.
Sure.
And if that were you in that instance, you could then resign. Of course, within that short span, council could change its mind, so there's exposure there.
Fine.
Uh, in this, you know, but it could be as a short, you know, a very short period, you know, moments, really. There just has to be that break before you.
Since this is, just affects me, let's, let's just go on, and we'll figure this out later. But that's what's been my concern, is if I had to give up this thing completely and risk not getting back on the council, and I wouldn't want to do that. Sorry.
Okay.
All right. Um, any more questions about this?
No.
Good? Okay.
I guess I have one.
Okay.
Uh, as someone, Andrew just said, can we pull the council now?
I think I heard Paulie say that he was going to give a consideration to see who applied.
Yeah, I am. Okay.
Right now, I know a couple, but that's all.
Okay. I'm good.
And one thing council that could look at as well, and I'm not sure it's been done before, but, uh, perhaps an appointment pending a resignation may, you know, again, if it's just to, for that continuity, you still have that break in time, so I don't know that that would be an issue, but if, if that's something that you all want to consider, it's something that we could look at.
Got it. Okay. All right. Okay. Well, now let's go back to the agenda, and we'll go to, um, board reports. Any board reports? I know. Remember the name and address and all that good stuff?
Brenda Giardino, 11661 Camp Drive, Chair of the Planning Commission. Last meeting on January 5th, uh, the city council had relayed that they had appointed Mr. Samuel Martian as the full member to the planning commission. And also Mr. Rex Lehman as the alternate member, and would serve, uh, start serving in February when the appointment for, uh, Mr. Pierpont expired. After tonight's comments, that may be a very short appointment, so we'll need to ask for more, um, participation on our planning commission. And the other thing that we did is we did review a site plan of a new car wash coming to town. Uh, it's a take five car wash. Um, it's bound by O'Reilly's to the north, uh, there, uh, North Williams Street to the west, a Thai roll facility to the south. So we're looking forward to that. I think it has 15 days or something, uh, if I recall.
Oh.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay. Is any other board reports? Do you? Oh, you're in the chamber. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All right. Any other board reports from anybody? Okay. Dan Allen Chamber, invisible, sub daily, report.
We have some new members at the chamber. We have High Touch Business Services, uh, Sheri Bernstein, Realtor with Keller Williams, and Quality First Roofing. And we have some events coming up with assistance from the city. Uh, February 9th, from 5 to 7, we have a Valentine cookie party with Julie Mancini at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op, and the cost to attend that class is $45. February 10th, we have a calligraphy and Valentine's card, uh, class from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM at the Art Co-op as well, and that's $40 to register for that one. Um, February 11th is a chili cook-off at Barber's and Beers from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. And I have a correction here because originally our, um, well, let me start with, the Greater Dan Allen Historical Society is going to be open from 9:00 to 12:00 on the 14th, and that was also supposed to be the date of our DCBA board meeting. Uh, we had to change that, so now our DCBA board meeting is going to be on the 21st at 6:00 PM. Um, February 15th, it's a make, make a wine cork toast class at the Rainbow Springs Art Co-op from 11:30 to 3:30. That's a $35 cost for that. And then February 17th, 18th, and 19th is the ultimate scale truck expo from 9:30 to 5 at the Cedar Lake Woods and Gardens. And that's all I have for today.
Great. I guess there's no other board reports ahead, so now we have a presentation by the Rainbow Springs Art.
Hello, council. I am Amy Wood, and I am the new president of the Rainbow Springs Arts Co-op. I live at 6409 West Riverbend Road in Dan Allen. And former president, Ms. Bridget Hamley, is now the executive director. And, um, she's been monumentally good at, I think, all she's been doing in bringing art to Dan Allen. Um, what I'm here for is really just to introduce myself. I'm originally from Maine. I live on a little island where the stellar sea eagle is now making appearance. Have you ever seen that? It's a Russian bird that's lost and stuck in Maine. And, um, I never thought I would become a Floridian. My husband's family is from Florida, and when we married 20-plus years ago, I asked him, you are not going to be one of those guys that's going to retire and move to Florida, are you? He swore up and down he wasn't. But I came down here, um, because his parents were here, and we had to take care of them and Hernando, and I absolutely fell in love with Dan Allen. So this is quite a special place, and I hope you guys can keep it like it is. A little more polished, something? But it's a wonderful place, and I hate to say it, really. Um, with that said, speaking of polish, I wanted to thank you for the beautiful new parking lot that you put in for us. Um, that is a shared space. Um, we lease from you, as you probably know, and that's the other main reason why I'm here, is to kind of start the process rolling on renewing our lease, which is going to be, uh, expiring at the end of December. And I just want to know, I have a little bit of idea, if you guys still want us, or, you know? Do you have other ideas for the building? Um, we are doing our public outreach with our festival coming up on March 18th, and that was kind of a difficult thing. Um, we applied for the permit to close, um, Pennsylvania Avenue, and apparently that's not going to happen. So, um, the art festival will now be at, um, Cedar Street. We're closing Cedar Street. And we're happy with that? We're, we're okay, but, um, I'm sort of getting a little feeling from the council that maybe you're kind of not happy with us or, or something. So that's, well, I wanted to say on that. Um, but anyways, I hope you guys will come. If you've never been to the gallery, at least come. Um, we're open on, uh, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and I'd love to see you guys come in, so.
Sure. Let me ask you, um, and Chief, I'm going to direct this to you. I mean, is it because Pennsylvania is, you know, a highway, and we're getting problems with getting a permit to close that? Although I know they closed it in the past. I didn't remember. Either one of you do?
I can actually help you out with that.
Okay.
Yes, for the many, many years now, the last 30 years that I know of, we've always shut down Pennsylvania for, uh, boomtown days, and then it increased to include the art gallery and a few other events throughout the year. But as time goes on, the requirements of just shutting down that section of Pennsylvania is becoming more and more of a liability to the city and a challenge because of the increase of traffic and congestion in the community. So, uh, about four years ago, when I took over in Public Works, we found out we needed to start pulling state permits to shut down the turn lane because Pennsylvania Avenue is the truck route, designated truck route through Dan Allen. So, and then there's always question back and forth whether or not we need a county permit, but here lately, we found out we don't need the county, put the horse in there. But because of my resignation this year, your staffing and the ability to pull those permits is limited, right? So I can't pull the permit and leave it with somebody. If I pull that permit, I have to execute it, and I won't be here to pull that permit. Um, and you're going to be short-staffed in Public Works, so it does create a bit of a challenge. Now, the individual organizations, Chamber, the art gallery, whoever wants to host an event, can also petition for their own permits and contract out the barricade services. But to shut down that one section of Pennsylvania Avenue, you have to realize it impacts the entire historic district because we have to reroute traffic all the way to Powell Road to do it. So it shuts down all those side roads. So if we are able to, the way we did today with the art gallery, find a way to pull it off to the side roads, then all they need is to say permit for an event, and they can move their own barricades in the fashion that they want on the city roads, as long as we have no issues with it. See what I mean? So it's a lot simpler and easier.
I think it's going to, it's going to be, I think it will work very well. But I'd like to see this, the historic districts turn into, you know, a walking thing that you could really spend time in. And right at art gallery, there's no crosswalk, so you have a little old lady trying to go over to Grumble's house with her walker. She's going to get flattened by a logging truck. So if we had, um, you know, no big traffic going through there, I think it would be a huge improvement for the city and something to think about.
Okay. Okay.
Um, then Troy, you're saying, could they pull the permit? Possibly, to get this done, but then they'd have to contract the barricades.
But then they'd have to find the resources to get the barricades put out and stuff. All right. Because it does take, when you're dealing with the county shutdown and the state shutdown, you have to have that certification to place and remove the barricades, and average person just can't do that. Um, so now, it's not that difficult to do, and places like Bob's Barricades, or Acme, or, or Sunbelt Rentals, they do provide those services, but they do cost. So, but at least this year, we're able to get their event accommodated on the side roads there and upcoming. Uh, Kelly and I have had conversations about this, and I'm trying to leave her with some good notations. Now, depending on who replaces my position, I may very well go back to what we've done traditionally.
Okay.
Okay? But it does take a team to get these barricades out. It's not something one or two can do.
No, no, I, I get that. Okay. Chief, what will you, you raise your hand?
May I, if you'll come to see me?
Yep.
We'll try and work this out.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Well, let's give it a...
Go ahead.
Sir?
I was, I clearly understand why Pennsylvania could be a problem, and I've always understood, couldn't understand how the city's getting this done because that's the truck route right there.
Yeah.
It's, it's doable.
But it's doable. If you'll come, I'm the chief, uh, can you ASAP or see the lieutenant?
Okay.
Uh, if you could tomorrow.
I'm saying, sooner we get something, y'all start talking about it, maybe we can get this resolved.
Right. Well, I hope y'all come to the festival and, and make that, or come to the gallery. And I'm sorry, this is not a presentation that I'm going to have a sing or dance. This is me.
All right. We'll bring it. Anybody else got a question? You got a question? Okay. Okay.
Vice Mayor? Can I back up just a second?
You sure can.
Before we get too much further, um, with regard to the vacancy, do I have a consensus to go ahead and publish that notice and application? Yes? Okay.
I don't think, we need, we need to do something pretty quick.
Okay. So I just want to make sure, because I, I have to get it published by tomorrow, get it in the paper next Friday.
Yes, I forgot, I'm sorry. Please, please stop making some forgetful move like that.
And you skipped department head report. Did you mean to do that?
Oh, no.
Okay.
Oh, I thought I did. Oh, I was going to, exactly. All right. Department head report. Department head report? Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Do I get to go first?
You can go first, go ahead.
All right, well, I'm going to start off, because Chief just reminded me of something. In talking about the barricades and shutdowns for these public events, I do remember the very first year that I took over, I had quite the challenge that we were faced with, with finding barricades, getting the permits pulled, having the MOT plan that was certified. And I just want to make a mention that Walker Construction stepped up to the plate and took care of it for us that first or second year that I was in my position here. So that is also an alternative. Am I right, Chief?
Yes, sir.
Yep, so I just wanted to point that out. It is definitely doable. Don't say no. Don't say yes until you got a plan. Real quick, a couple of very simple things on my department head report. First of all, the first one is concerning a road paving project we had talked about on a few occasions throughout this leading year, from the start of the budget until currently. This is regarding the ARCA funds that we have for use of repairing the roads and storm water management components. I started looking at this potential project about two years ago, two and a half years ago. So I'm going to make a request that the council review the information I'm about to give you and make a decision to move forward with this project. Recently, I received the IPO, which is the project order, individual project order request to our engineering firm to perform the services of engineering, which includes the subcontract services of surveying any geological data that's collected, all the processes to create this project and follow this project through to the very end. This IPO also includes their services to do all the administrative stuff. Going out to bid, writing up the contracts, working with the contractors, contractor selection. And in this particular case, because I won't be here after the end of this month, they have also included the cost for their services to manage this project, okay? So the IPO is available. It will be sent out to council for your review. If you want me to, I can give you a total caller number on it. It's a shocker, so be careful. Now, I encourage you to read the entire IPO because it describes a hundred percent of all the services that are provided in it. But the total cost for the start-finish on this project through the engineering services is one sixty-five, five hundred. So it's a hundred sixty-five thousand, five hundred. And a good portion of that is for their subconsultant services. So again, take into consideration, if you find a suitable replacement for my position that can take over and do project management, that number can be saved or renegotiated with Kinley Moore. This is just in the event that you need them to do it for you, okay? This project, Michelle, if you'll pull that file up, just show them the map on that file if you can. This project, for those of you that don't know or just getting caught up on it, this is for the Menetrisco Palmetto Way area. On the left of the screen is the intersection of William Street in Pennsylvania. To the right of the screen is the Rainbow River. This is the neighborhood that sits between Pennsylvania Avenue and the Rainbow River. Those highlighted red areas on that map are the work zone or tentative work zone areas. Starting from left to right, you have River View that goes in behind Bingo Hall, for a short section of roadway there. Around to the Granada, although those lines are a little further extended out. We were going to stop at Mary Street, not White, all the way to Palmetto Port. So these dimensions have changed, but a rough idea. If you move to the center of the screen, go down about halfway, there's a short road by the name of Oakwood. And by the way, there's two residents in the audience tonight that live on Oakwood that have been waiting four years for this announcement, so. Oakwood is about three hundred feet long. It's completely dissolved and almost a hundred percent deteriorated. But it can be worked into this project at the same time for repaving. You'll notice at the end of Wicire, just to the right of Oakwood there, there's a red section there. It looks like it's going through a piece of property. That is an underground storm drain, city-owned, operated storm drain, that has failed and come apart. That needs to be reconstructed and modified to bring the storm water down from Wicire to Magnolia and out to the river basin, okay? Then you'll see that the hundred percent of Magnolia is highlighted for potential complete repaving, as it will require the most sewer work and redesign of the driveway aprons to allow for the storm water flow. And then the next final portion is to target the main intersections, those five intersections along Palmetto Way, to redesign where the garbage trucks or a long bed trailer can make these radiuses without crushing existing culvert pipes. Okay? So it's a rather extensive, detailed project. It is on our start report that we just added in to help with our MS four and our storm water requirements. I've already had a field meeting with the engineers, that field meeting with Water and Sewer Company, as it will or may impact some of their services, okay? And if this council decides to move forward with this project, remember, with use of those ARCA funds, we are limited in the timeline because if we don't use it, Jan, I want to say by 2026, we have a potential of losing those funds. So that's why I'm requesting you, don't hesitate, move forward. Now, some of the stuff here, the size and scope may change based on the total estimated cost when we get that back from the engineers. And so it may expand or reduce in what you see here, okay? But roughly, you're looking at a million-dollar project. Okay? So I'll have Mandy send you out this IPO. If you have any questions about it, please contact me. And if at all possible, I believe the council has the power to go ahead and put this on for Monday's agenda for potential approval. It will take four months to get the rough draft and the, because of all the surveying and the geological data that needs to be collected, six months, you should be about ninety percent ready to break ground. And then a potential six-month work period after that.
Okay, so what, I mean, if you're talking about six months, then we're looking at probably September before they break ground.
Right, so the good thing in the timing of that is when you get your tentative budget cost provided by the engineers, you will also be knee-deep in your next year's budget process. So the council can then effectively, or more properly make a determination, do you want to add to that project with the gas tax funds or whatever available funds that you have, or do you want to reduce the size of this project to fit in a smaller budget? So I think the timing of starting now with the engineering gives you the best success rate of setting out your budget for next year to follow it through.
Can I add one thing to that? The timing is everything because we are under, we are obligated to spend this money by 2026. I was just thinking that.
I asked you while you were talking, yes, that's fine.
And I said, you know, if we can't get a contractor on board because they're busy, we don't know what the feds will do. They'll allow an extension, or if it's, uh-uh, you didn't spend it, you're out of luck.
Sounds like Troy has it under control.
So, yeah, so the sooner we can jump on this, the better.
So with that, Council, I want to just ask for your consensus to have this put on Monday's agenda for approval. And you take it from there. But also keep in mind, I know my resignation time is coming soon. I've already agreed with Mandy. I gave her a hundred percent backing on this project. I've talked with the engineers, and I've actually talked with our vice mayor. I will be involved until this is completed. I won't be here every day, but my phone will be on, and I don't mind helping and getting you through this process. There's nothing to totally stress over.
Jan, you have a comment? The comments, and thank you very much, Troy.
You're welcome. All right, now, there are a few other.
Before you go on, I want to get this approved. I'm very concerned about that, okay? You in?
No, I'm all for putting it on Monday.
Okay, I am too. Only thing I request, if y'all can get that out to us so we can all study it, review it, totally read it. So when we get here Monday night, we're all prepared to ask some, probably some questions we're not thinking about. But I am totally, we have got to get this approved. And I'm going, next thing I'm going to say is, I don't see this happening again unless it's a situation like this because this is not really proper protocol, and you know that, and you're not a disgusting. But to me, this is too critical for nine hundred, a million dollars. We're going to lose if we don't spend it, okay?
If I was going to be around for another couple of months, I would pause.
No, I don't.
Wait until March.
Okay, well, let's put it on the agenda, and y'all can get that out to us so we can all really study it and get comfortable with it. We're good.
Okay, very good.
Okay, go ahead, Troy.
Okay, now, the rest of it's simple, I promise. Marion County Ocala-Denellan TPO Priority Project List. Y'all hear a lot about TPO. You know, I sit on the board for the the TPO Advisory Committee stuff. Yesterday, we had a meeting with Rob Bombs, who's the director of Marion County Ocala TPO. He presented us with a current list of important projects, priority projects, that the state, the county, and Denellan are working on, TPO. And it's asked, Mandy, correct me if I get this wrong, but he's asked that we review this as a city. Mandy and I have already started a review. I will work with each one of you council members between now and Monday to do a review to prioritize the top five as Denellan sees it, okay? This is a recommendation to the TPO. It doesn't, it's not really a voting thing. You're not going to vote to say this is a hundred percent. So it's something I think we can just do in a general discussion to give them their answers by February twenty-eighth on looking over the projects, which I can explain to you why they're there, what they're for, and help us decide what Denellan would like to see as the top five. And this is everything from paving William Street from Walmart up to Highway forty. That's on the list. There's the redesign of the Pennsylvania William Street intersection, which is also part of the project of the repaving of William Street, okay? Which I did get an update from. I did get an update from the Florida Department of Transportation on that particular thing where 2024, the repaving of William Street is scheduled to begin. In other words, that's when they're actually going to go into their final designing, selecting contracts, servicing funding. By 2027, they plan to do the addition widening of William Street from Walmart to Highway forty. So that is back on the table. That's the type of things that are in this list that I will review with each of you between now and Monday so that we can get out by February twenty-eighth a response to the TPO, okay?
Troy, if I can interrupt, can we get a copy of that list beforehand so we can take a look?
We're going to have the electronic file emailed out to you.
I just emailed it in.
Now, when you see it, it's going to be confusing and all over the place. But just look through it, look for anything that looks close to Denellan, and that's where we're going to focus. The multimodal bike trail is actually in this as a safety operations review project, right? So it is part of that 484. Although DOT has nothing to do with it, it is funded by the state and county and local resources, right? So that's my next follow-up with the council right now, the multimodal bike trail for 484. Got a call from the engineering office yesterday. They are ready to schedule their kickoff meeting between the county and the city. It'll be scheduling through Mandy. And even if it goes a couple of weeks into March, I'll do everything I can to at least be attentive to the kickoff meeting to assist whoever sits in and takes that project over, okay? And then two last things. Couple of months ago, I started an accreditation certification program through our insurance provider, Florida Lake City's FMIT Insurance Providers. This program is all about municipal safety excellence and initiatives through a volunteer safety program. And we look around at our city infrastructures, we look at our workplace, we look at our employees, and do better training, better safety voluntarily, and get a recognition for that. And along with that, if we get that certification, there could be reasonable savings in our premiums. There could be opportunities for better grant funding or partnership funding through them. Right now, say if I spend a hundred dollars on Safety Vest, we actually get fifty percent of that back. This qualification will give us bigger, better opportunities for bigger money, like fixing sidewalks or, you know, doing safety things. Just found out today that we are so close that I may have this certification approved or sixty percent approved by the time I leave at the end of February. So look forward to getting an update from Mandy in March. That's the status of that. But it will continue to move forward. I'll be working with Sharon and Michelle to see that that does not fall the radar. And then the last thing here is our Denellan beautification volunteer group. They're moving forward with the Ernie Mills Project plant, beautifications there. We had a meeting, was it yesterday? Day before. Yesterday or the day before, we had a meeting on it. We'll be doing two more meetings this week, one here at the office with Jan for Rita, help Michelle with the funding, and another one with the, two of the members just to finalize the selection of the plants and get the quotes available for purchase. This will have to come in front of council if it exceeds five thousand dollars. So I just want to get you prepared, so when it comes to the table in March, you know what it's for, and you know we have the funding, okay? And yes, I am going to volunteer one weekend to at least put one plant in ground, because you've worked on this for a year now. All right. That's it for my department updates.
Okay, can I add some, one thing that I received? I've just gotten something from the Florida Department of Transportation today. There's going to be a meeting on March the second, five thirty, right here, to discuss their project to improve, as they put it, US forty-one from the Citrus County line, which would be the bridge, up to one hundred and tenth Street southwest. That is Walmart, right. And it's also going to take basically Pennsylvania Avenue, not very far, but it's going to start right at the intersection of Pennsylvania and forty-one, or William Street and Pennsylvania Avenue, and go back across to Mastick Street. And they're going to come down here and they want to do a full discussion of this to all of us. And according to what I'm reading, it's an ongoing design project that will be finished in twenty-three, and they will start paving in twenty-four. Thank goodness. Okay, so I wanted y'all to hear this, because if you're interested in what's going on in that great intersection we have, you might want to come sit and listen to this.
Now I need to call Kenneth at FDOT NY. I did not get that update. But you see, I was right on with the timing of that. I've been working with them in that design and concepts. They've been engineering and surveying that area for the last six months, so good to hear.
Good to hear.
If you all can make sure I get that too for publishing to the website.
Sure, yeah, I brought it tonight, but I'll send you the email I got, because you can do better with it.
Okay, any other department heads? Jan?
Jan, do you have anything?
I just have one thing, and it's going to be discussed at the time we discuss the boat ramp. I received some information today on an honor box that I'll just show you. But that'll be later on. And the audit is in full swing.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay, Kelly?
I'm not a department head, but I can be.
Well, that, no, you're not, but you're a quasi right now.
So, I had a time to start today to turn around permitting, to alleviate some of my time, to focus on getting the department organized with, you know, codes, form updates, website updates, processes, just all the things that kind of bog us down in the daily processing of items. So, she seems real sharp, I have no doubt she'll be flying solo very shortly. As far as what's in the pipeline that's not getting done, from a planning perspective, maybe site plans sitting on the manager's desk back there, one for Eliano's, which is going to be a freestanding coffee shop they want to put in the Save-A-Lot Plaza. There's Heart of Florida, which they're going to be adding on to their existing building, so that requires a planner review. RV park potential, new drive-through restaurant at Yield, where Yield Pizza's always been. So, those things are sitting there, going nowhere fast, and...
Kelly, could you just speak into that, I see some people...
Oh, sorry. Sorry. So, we have a few site plans on hold right now until we do get somebody eligible to come in and at least do that piece. Something else that planner would be useful for, zoning type decisions in situations where the code is unclear, you know, I have every faith in my ability to make those decisions, but ultimately, you know, somebody's gotta be held accountable for those decisions made. So, if you wanna come up with an alternate process in the meantime for how those decisions are made, you can discuss that. And they would also need to rewrite, you know, the comp plan, land use regs, and in my opinion, a rezoning of the city. So, to get it to a point where we can stop things from happening that may not be best for the town, so, that's all I have. Any questions?
Well, it might be just a good time to mention that I'm gonna, I have an appointment to come out this week and talk with Mandy, and try to learn a little bit more about where things are at with the permitting program, is it getting off the ground, what are the pain points, is it the right program for us? So, I, it's sometimes hard to know what you all are doing, but I'm gonna spend a little bit of time in community development to try to learn about what's going on, and then be able to bring back and advocate from our perspective what we need to do to move it forward.
Good. And we'll discuss that later, at least I've got a part of my presentation tonight is discussing what all four of us, or eventually five of us, will need to kinda take a lead on. Clearly, unfortunately, Julian, you were my selection to work with her. But you don't have to agree with that, okay? Okay, Mandy?
Chief, do you have anything?
I'd like to go last, because I got the next two presentations.
Very well, okay. I have, just run down this with you. I don't know if you've all noticed that the City Hall wooden fence out there has been repaired, and it looks amazing, oh my gosh, it looks so much better, I'm so excited to drive up into the parking lot and see it, it looks so good, and it was only $433 in materials to do the work, and the Public Works literally built it from scratch. They didn't buy panels and put them up there, they nailed every board, so, I wanna thank them for that. So, Pension Board, at their meeting on 9/14, they requested to reappoint Steve Lucini to a two-year term on that board as a resident member, and per statute, that appointment, the municipality, they have to be a legal resident, Steve is, and that appointment must be by the legislative body of the municipality. This is something that can go on consent, if that's okay with you. We don't have any other applicants for the Pension Board.
And he'd been on there, right?
He's been on there for quite a while, yeah. So, if that's okay, we'll just put that appointment on consent, and he'll serve another term, okay? We did receive a letter from DEO regarding the comp plan amendment for non-conforming signs with no objections. The letter states that the ordinance will take effect 31 days following receipt of the notice unless challenged by an affected person, so, so far, so good there. Vice Mayor Dunn has indicated he may not be able to be present at one or both of the March meetings due to medical reasons, so I have proposed a motion to be placed on the consent agenda. If you all are okay with that, it would allow him to call in and participate and vote during those meetings remotely. Andrew, do you have anything to add to that?
No, but there's opinions that, as you've seen, that's something the city has done in the past, and while the law side has been more and more lenient with allowing that type of call-in, that's exactly one of the types of things that was originally contemplated for medical type of conditions and so forth, so, I don't see any issue with that. Council will just need to, you know, find, make a finding that that, that they're good with that, and do that on the record, and that would satisfy that requirement.
Okay. So, if y'all are okay, that motion can go on consent?
Yes.
As well. And then, Staffing, Community Development Manager position has been advertised since early January, and I'll, I sent this to all of y'all, so y'all can see where all it was advertised. Currently, we don't have any applications. The Public Works position was recently advertised in many of the same places. At the time I sent out this report, we did not have any applications, but we had one come in today. And I haven't had a chance to fully vet it, I'm not sure whether or not the applicant is qualified, but I'll let you know. We had two interviews this week for the Public Works Full-Time Service Worker position. My understanding is both of those went very well, from what I've heard from Michelle and Troy, so hopefully, we'll have that position filled here very soon. I would like to propose some adjustments to compensate the Planning Assistant and the Service Worker Two, which is currently the second highest-ranked position in Public Works, for their additional requirements that they're gonna have to step up and take on in the absence of a department head. I've talked with a couple of you about it with regard to methodology, and what makes sense, and what seems reasonable, what seems fair. The Personnel Manual only allows me to apply a 5% working out of classification increase when someone is doing something for more than two weeks at a higher level, and I don't think that's sufficient for what we're going to expect of Kelly and Matt. So, what I did is I took the midpoint between the beginning range of the staff position and the department head position, and that midpoint in those circumstances averages to about 20% increase for those positions during this transition period. So, as long as I have, council's okay to go ahead and do that, I can get you the numbers, I haven't had time to just like get the numbers out to you specifically, but I think it's a fair and equitable way to do it. So, if you're okay with that, I can get you those numbers, and because this is outside of the policy, excuse me, I would assume, Andrew, that I would need a motion on Monday's agenda for them to authorize those pay increases.
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll make sure that gets on there, and I'll get you all the details in between now and Monday. As Kelly was stating, the temporary permitting clerk through the staffing agency started today, Lorraine, who goes by Lola, in reviewing her credentials, she has a wealth of customer, wealth of customer service, technical and clerical experience, and she also worked for, in the permitting department for Cypress County for nearly a year, so she has some permitting background and seems to be catching on pretty quick. Because this is through a staffing agency, it's not a city employee, they're not entitled to any benefits, everything is through the staffing agency. Options for professional planning services in community development, currently, we have a contract with MT Causely Safe Build, which has a provision for planning services that is remote only, and it's $90 an hour. So, through that contract, we wouldn't have anybody to attend council meetings, provide testimony during quasi-judicial hearings, but they are available to provide remote support when needed. We could also go out to bid, prepare an RFP for a professional consulting firm. I believe under the first thing policy, we might be able to contract with a firm in the interim until that process is done, if we have a need to do so. And then, a third option that was brought to my attention today was perhaps Marion County would consider an interlocal agreement for planning services, and we could use their staff for a fee, so that's something that we can investigate. And again, as Kelly had stated, there are some immediate needs in community development, we have two site plan applications that are ready for review, and then we have two pre-application meeting requests for site plans, one being a new business in Danella Plaza, and one being the proposed RV park on West 40. And all of those four outstanding issues will need to be addressed by a professional planner. That's all I have.
Tell me, any comments? I've got some, but I don't know which one about any of this. Any of this, okay. You're gonna send the cost on the 20% increases, is what I understand, for the tent position? Can we get the costs for that?
Sure.
Okay, so, we have basically four different items that need to get moved through. And I guess right off the top of my head, can we contact the county right away, see if they can take on those four? And that's my thoughts, I'm good.
Okay.
Going back up, I agree with what you just said, for sure, on asking, oh, I'm sorry, I thought I asked you, I'm sorry.
You did, and I let him go first. Hey, the last four items, two were site plan approvals and two were pre-approvals, the RV park and another one, just wondering, what's pre...
It's a pre-application meeting, so it's before they submit the site plan, they come in and meet with staff to determine what all is necessary in the site plan, and it's just a pre-app meeting before they actually submit their site plan to go over.
And that's just between the applicant and the staff?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And I would like to mention too, per the statute, when it comes to development permits and orders, 166-033 states, within 30 days after receiving an application for approval of a development permit or a development order, a municipality must review the application for completeness and issue a letter indicating that all required information is submitted or specify, or specify with particularity any areas that are deficient. So, we are limited on the, on our timeframe to be able to respond to these applicants.
I totally agree, I think, looking at the county and any other options to stay on top of this, because again, these folks are waiting, and we need to keep things moving, for sure. Again, I think we reach out to county, and if you know of another service that we could possibly hire temporarily until we find up a placement, I think we just need to look at all options to get this, get these things moving. Personally. Back to the Public Works Manager, you said you did have an application come in, would you mind looking at that and getting with Mandy and just evaluating what you think? Is this a good enough candidate, are they gonna have the quality? In fact, if we interview them, if you're still here, I'd love for you to interview them, if you don't mind, okay?
No problem.
Okay, and again, you asked about the salary and the 20%, yeah, if you could get that to us, that'd be great, okay? On this temporary person working for you, I know she's not involved, but I would like you to keep us informed, I mean, she's only been here one day, but I mean, you really can't evaluate her one day, but after a few days, keep, get with Mandy and let her know what your preliminary thoughts are. Is this somebody that we might wanna do something else with, or what do we wanna do?
Right, and I realize we don't have time to waste on that, so, come on it.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's all my hand. Can I, any other department head? Go ahead. I just wanna piggyback off of Duann, with the pre-permits, is that something that has to go to the county, she's had staff, is there something, is it...
Sorry, you said for tree permits?
No, the pre...
Oh, pre-apps, yeah, okay, so for the pre-app meetings, no. Basically, they come in, we go through all the forms that are required, explain what they should put on there, because a lot of people don't understand the zoning, you know, we just make sure that what they're wanting to put in meets the zoning criteria. That much I could help them with, but when it comes to reviewing the actual submission documents that they give us...
Okay, gotcha. So, to clarify, we really need the counties, we were just talking about the county, was what I was saying, so we really need somebody like the county's help to help with the two site review plans, but we have the capability of doing the pre...
You do, and, but there's some additional coordination that has to be done whenever, you're talking about new development too, with utilities and utility availability and that sort of thing too, that a planner would have to coordinate with the FGUA to go over that kinda stuff, so, but yeah, I mean, the basic stuff, we can tell them, you know, how to conform, and whether the zoning is appropriate and that sort of thing, but when it starts getting real technical and legal, that's when we need someone.
Okay, okay, so, are we in agreement that for the four we're talking about, two, we need to get outside help with, for the type B, the two pre ones, we can handle those?
The two pre ones, I can set up a meeting and just go over the forms and zoning with them, and then, yes, the two applications that we actually have, we can, Mandy will work on getting somebody to review those.
Gotcha, okay, thank you. Okay, Chief, you're up.
Very good.
Might wanna bring a chair.
Well, we're gonna start off with a traffic perfect storm, which was two days ago. Traffic was backed up all the way across the bridge. When I called it a perfect storm, first it was DOT who was at the intersection, had contractors out there, they put their cones out, and once we made contact with them, the DOT, DOT come up and said they did not have the proper protocol, and proper safety standards was not met, so, I don't know who interfered with that, but DOT was very mad at their contractor, according to DOT, so. Then, we had a telephone company bury their fiber optics cable under the road, and the same thing happened with them, they did not have proper protocol or proper safety according to their managers, and they also received the chewing from their upper echelon. And what makes this worse is, I did talk to DOT, and he gave the same thing to me, that they sent you in the email in 2024, they're gonna start, and they're going to resurface from the bridge all the way to Walmart. If we have one lane blocked, think about what's gonna happen in 2024 when they start resurfacing. What makes it worse is, I asked this guy to send me a traffic count, his latest traffic count on 41, and I did receive it, and for the date of 6/23 to 6/24, that's a 24-hour period, in 2021, $24,604... in 2021, twenty-four thousand, six hundred and four cars passed through, I want to say Powell Road, because there's a saying, it's point oh five, four nine miles north of County Road forty-four, which puts it just about at Powell Road. So we've got twenty-four thousand cars. That was in 2021. Anybody want to guess that there's more cars going through there now? I'll take the S. So we're going to be very busy next year, next couple of years probably, with just with DOT and the works that are going on there. And so that's the traffic perfect storm that happened. Two entities not talking to each other, or talking to anybody at City Hall, or talking to us, decided to go out and start blocking lanes. But anyway, and what makes it worse is I'm going to, when they're going to go away with that curve there on forty-four and forty-one, you know, where you make the right-hand turn, that's going to go away. So I'd like to see the plans on that.
That's where we need to be here more sick.
Yes. So anyway, that's all I've got. Any questions on DOT or traffic storm that came about? So just getting everybody's update.
And that would just increase the traffic coming through our parking lot?
Yes.
People have been taking shortcuts.
Oh, I know. I mean, people are going everywhere. I tried to drive through it three or four times the other day for two days, and it was just...
You can't get through it.
You can't. And that's really why I immediately called you and said, is there anything?
Bumper, bumper backed up. But people that are not so plus.
Right. Okay.
Anyway, so the next discussion will be the conceptual plan. I was asked to bring this forward for what is our next move? What is the next move? So Mandy, would you please put that up? What I did was, is I contacted the engineer, Joe London, and got it straight from the horse's mouth. So this is what he presented to me. If the council wants to move forward just using one lot, then they got to perform a complete boundary, topographic tree location, utility location, state plan, coordinate survey, and one hundred-foot overlap beyond the property boundaries. Perform or require geological technical testing for both proposed building and parking lot and drainage retention. Prepare and submit a formal plan for the Denali site plan and prepare and submit for environmental resources permit and prepare formal architectural building plans, including structural, mechanical, and electrical and plumbing design. Option two, if the council wants to move forward using two lots, is basically the same thing they have to go through. Option three, stop work and not move forward. If that is the choice of the city council, then we will owe Kinley Horn nineteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars and fifteen cents of the thirty-two thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars in the agreement for the work they have already done. So now it's in city council's hands, is option one, option two, or option three?
Questions on the council? Any discussion? No, I do not. Okay.
I have nothing.
Okay. All right. Wait.
So we're not going to, you mean, Penny? We're...
We'll see, move up, this will move to Monday's agenda meeting and make our decision then, I presume? This is a workshop.
I would call for vote.
Do you want to discuss, have any discussion now?
I say we move forward and do our homework, and we come back on Monday and make a decision.
I know you said you had some information, and I told you to hold off with me.
Well, that's what I just gave.
Okay.
That's what I just gave.
Okay. Seems like there's a map that you gave us, you sent out with all this today, or a picture of the...
Well, there's the conceptual site plan that's been developed thus far.
Now, that's one lot, right?
That's one lot.
That's what I thought. I remember looking at it. All right. So you all just want to look at everything and figure out something on Monday?
Yeah, at one point, the mayor was tasked with being part of this conversation so that we had someone from council. So is that something that someone has assumed responsibility for? Who's the council person who's now involved in this process? My question.
I don't think we have anybody right this minute.
What we've gone as far as we can until we get council approval to do one, two, or three. There's no more meetings to be had, there's no more, anything else to, we know what the council is going to do.
Can I ask if the mayor participated in?
Yes, he did.
He did?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep. And also, I presented the same thing to another council member two days ago.
Here's, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Okay, so we see these items. This is not going to please you, Mike, chief, sorry. But I think we need to walk through a few of these at some point. The pros and cons of getting a lot, not getting a lot. I don't see that we're going to be ready for money to vote on anything without discussion amongst ourselves. And I don't see that happening in a meeting like this, where we have more agenda items. It might be something due to the importance and the need and the money that we need to have a special meeting for, that we sit down and tackle all these items, get everybody's opinion after, you know, we've reviewed this, we've worked with the chief, you know, individually. What's this mean, our questions? Get those answered, and then come back in a special meeting and go through these. I totally agree. And again, we've already got nineteen things on this agenda tonight, and blowing my mind. But anyway, I don't think we've got time to do a full discussion. The only thing, I have a question or two about this. I know we already own lot one. It seems like when he was discussing this the other night, he said, you know, we could buy the second lot, I don't know what that would cost. And then I got the impression that he would have to reconfigure all this if we had two lots, because he's trying to squeeze all this into one.
That's true. That's option two. He would have to reconfigure, but it'd be under the price that they've already...
I was going to say, that was my next question. Does this thirty-two thousand, would that cover that additional?
According to what they're saying, yes.
Okay.
Because all you're doing is bore.
Okay. Okay. I think what we're going to have to do, and I agree, is put this on a special meeting. Let's focus on it, and let's make a decision, and then go on. But unfortunately, I just don't think we've got time tonight to address it, Mike.
Yes.
Okay. Come on. Go ahead. Is it practical to set up a meeting date now?
Sure.
Yeah. I might be remote. I might open, so I don't have any...
Okay.
I say that I might open except for next Wednesday. I might open the rest of the month, unless I'm... My week.
The, the, I'm sure it'll be during the day, which probably wouldn't be an issue, but the following, next week might be okay. The following week, the twentieth through the twenty-third is when we're trying to schedule the kickoff meeting for the bike trail that Troy and I will be going over for. But that might not interfere if you have your meeting at regular five-thirty. But I mean, if you want to do, you want to stick with the Wednesday schedule, you could do it on the twenty-second.
That works with me.
I can be here on the twenty-second, or I will not be here on the twenty-third.
What about, what about you?
I'm good.
Twenty-second?
Good.
You good? Julian. Why don't we send, I mean, we got to announce it, so we need to, you know, let's do the twenty-second.
Get it on the calendar.
Okay. All right, Mike, let's do the boat dock, please.
You ready?
The big ten dollar.
The purpose of this is we have our boat located at a certain location on the river. The owner of the boat dock, we have, we are able to take it out of the water. We are able to, it's a perfect for the Denali Police Department because it's right at the Hookah River and the Rainbow River. And we would like to have these authorized by the mayor to execute the agreement for a whole harmless, and the whole harmless agreement was drawn up by our student attorney, Andrew Hadd. And if you don't mind, we would like to get it signed and get it back to the homeowner. So any questions on the lease agreement?
I do. Andrew, can you just explain the line in number three that says, "In no event shall the amount of said indemnification exceed the damage caps within Florida statute"?
Yes, so what 768-285 is, is that's the sovereign immunity. Now provisioned that caps liability that local governments may have. Now, that can contractually be eroded away. So this is making it clear that there is not. One of the terms of this agreement, as you see, there is not a significant amount of rent. But what was asked of me by the chief, that it was requested by the lessor, isn't indemnification for any type of negligence or some kind of liability body of energy. It's the city's sole negligence. So per this provision, there is that cap, and that cap would stay in place, two hundred thousand dollars per claim or three hundred thousand dollars per occurrence, but there is exposure to the city if the city is solely negligent, which would be the case, because the city is responsible for its sole negligence. But in any case, it would be a good idea for the city to check with its insurer to see what sort of coverage it has in such event. Typically, that should cover it, but...
So that would be my first, that was my first question, checking with the insurer on that. I'm wondering where this boat was stored prior to this proposal?
Same place.
Oh, it's always been at this residential home?
It's been there, yes.
Been there for long.
Years. Over years, right.
So this is the renewal of an agreement that already exists?
There was no, there was no agreement. It was verbal.
Yeah, I remember when this was done three or four years ago.
I'm sorry?
I remember when this was done three or four years ago. I thought there was a lease, but obviously there wasn't. But one question. I, go ahead.
Oh, yeah, so I'm just curious, the home where this is stored, at the home of the McAndrews, do they, are they affiliated with the city or with the police department in some way?
Nobody.
No.
Just good citizens.
Okay. And the police car looks good in their driveway.
I'm sorry?
The police car looks good in their driveway.
Yeah. We have in question this, because the police car has been in that man's driveway for up to twelve hours. People have actually put a stopwatch on the bounty mark about twenty-four hours ago. In that row.
Because you guys got to drive over a parked car to get in the boat.
To get in the boat.
I get it.
I guess I didn't know until last night, when I was reading over this stuff, that this, that this is where the boat was stored. I think, you know, in the future, if the city has a boat that needs a place for storage, that maybe it's something that the city should be talking about so that we can be responsible for. I mean, I know it's convenient and on the face, it's ten dollars. But the whole thing on principle, to me, raises, raises these and other questions. Thank you.
Andrew, I only have one question. I was reading something today, and I love to read, so I was reading this. Anyway, there's a proposal, seems like at the state Capitol, to change these rates. And did you see that? I was shocked when I saw it. Of course, it says it, probably not, I asked.
I have not seen it yet. I've seen some of the bills trickling in. For instance, the bill that Mandy just brought up, the one sixteen, I don't want to get too far off topic. To answer your question, no, I have not. And it's also a good time to let you know with that 166.033, it's certainly not something the city's facing in the future, in immediate future. But there has been a proposal by, by the legislature to make any, regardless of any agreements in place, if there's an application that's not acted upon or it's not finalized within six months, to make it an approval, which is very, very significant. Don't know if it'll pass or not, but it's important to bring that up. And I was going to bring it up during my attorney report and kind of give you a temperature of what we're seeing from, from state legislature. So it does not surprise me, because we're seeing a lot of proposals that really hammer local governments, as we saw last year in our discussion with the park. So it's unfortunate, but not surprising. And I have not seen the numbers, I'll check that out in between when I have a moment.
Well, I just saw it today in the news, and of course, this is all a proposal, and we never really accept this until it gets passed. But they were going to change the two hundred thousand to two hundred thousand, but the three hundred thousand were going to five million. I was quite shocked.
That's not even...
Just make sure we got enough insurance. Okay. That's all I have. No, I, I don't have problems, because I remember this when it was done. Right?
Consent agenda?
I have... That's fine with me. Go ahead. So have we, Andrew mentioned contacting the insurance company, make sure we're okay with that? Has that happened? Okay, thank you. Gotcha.
By the way, Mayor, I would say if we could leave it off at consent agenda, then we would be able to get the update from Jan and just close the loop. Thank you.
Okay. You got it, man?
Yes, sir.
Don't put that on the consent agenda. Okay. All right. But we will address it.
If everyone agrees. I think I have...
Yeah. No, I think clearly, we need to make sure we got the right insurance. And right now, this is two to three hundred thousand, but we don't want to be out there naked either. And it's really not good that this wasn't right. I mean, just a hundred things. I get it. We got good citizens here, but you never know who's going to sue you.
That's absolutely wise, being local.
Okay. All right. Is that it, chief?
Yes, sir.
Thanks, sir.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item on agenda, unless I'm missing one. Duke Energy Electric Vehicle Station. Like we're amending this agreement.
So this agreement was actually the site host agreement for the EV charging stations. This was approved back in June. However, the attachment that was the exhibit to that agreement had a different location. So here's the agreement that got approved. So you have your entire site host agreement here, we do. Nothing has changed within this agreement. That is still in place. However, this exhibit had a different location address, and it was over, there was one proposed for the parking lot over at Dayton, behind Gruss. And there was one proposed in the parking spaces there at Ernie Mills Park. Well, that since changed, and Duke has now come back, and they're wanting to put it in the parking lot next to Public Works. So the only thing that has changed is this Exhibit A, which is the location. So I don't know that you need to approve the entire agreement again, but I would think at a minimum, acknowledge that the exhibit has been updated and approve the exhibit.
It's now one site instead of two, and the parking has been moved from one side of the street...
I don't like moving across the street. Do we have, I mean, it's going to be, you said, Public Works, and there's a lot of parking there. Do we have... Do we have any input exactly where they put down?
Absolutely. That, uh, as you come up to Public Works, we got that chain link fence between us and the car wash. Along that chain link fence, the first three or four parking spaces will be affected. So there's a transfer pole that brings the power to the car wash right there. They're going to upgrade that power unit, put everything right there along that fence line. Okay?
Sounds great.
We're going to finally get us electric.
Our insurance is right there.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right through the agreement, something where I just wasn't asking it, who's paying, how is the electricity getting paid for?
100% paid for from start and finish by Duke Energy. No expense to the city, no maintenance responsibility by the city for 10 years. And then after that, we can decide that we can upgrade it, we can have it removed, we can, you can, uh, start charging for people to use it, but it's all sponsored and paid for 100% by Duke Energy.
Okay, including the electricity to do the charging itself?
Maintenance, everything.
Gotcha, thank you.
Yeah, that's the way I wrote it. I'm, I'm going to run.
Okay. Julianne, you good?
Okay.
I don't consent.
I'm fine with that. Yes. Okay, uh, moving on. Um, oh, the grant, Hurricane Grant.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Counsel, I had made mention at a previous meeting when I was working with FEMA to submit, um, our expenses related to Hurricane Ian, which happened at the very end of September. And we have an approved project here with reimbursement, um, at a minimum of $10,851.72. And I did send out earlier today schedules that showed what made up those expenses. It's 100% reimbursed. With approval of this, our representative will prepare another small project to reimburse us 5% for administration, which is my time and the finance post time, to put all this together. So we're looking at a total reimbursement of 11, hopefully $11,393.72. This just needs to be executed to be able to move forward. It's a standard federal agreement. We've got audit requirements, um, things you don't have to be concerned about. It all falls in my lap, um, but this is a typical grant agreement. I've seen many of them. So...
It falls in your laps if I have to sign it.
You do have to sign it.
But that's okay.
Um, but other than that, um, uh, it can move forward and this should be really relatively very, very quick. Once the state receives the money from the federal government, they'll send it directly to us.
Sure.
So, um, I'm hoping that this can go on the consent agenda.
Yeah, I, I'm saying put it on the consent agenda, let y'all agree. Yeah, I was waiting for the schedules. When you shipped them out today, I was like, okay, we're good. All right. Okay. If anybody can get on with that one, so 11, uh, grant writing services, Jan.
That's me again. Um, Counsel, we wanted to talk to, to see if you would give us approval to put out an RFP, uh, to see what companies out there that specialize in grant writing may work, may be willing to work with the city, um, hopefully, maybe on a no cost basis, they, they go for a grant and if awarded, they, we would then reimburse them for their costs. That may or may not happen. We can pull whatever we want in the RFP, but there are many companies out there that specialize in different grants. Some specialize only with grants for DEP, some with, um, CD, with DEO, others with DOT. For example, the city of Palatka has contracted with, I believe it's five different companies for different types of grants. And of course, you know, there's no cost unless they, they do work. It's just kind of having them on feed and by because we, we, we're a city that really needs to partially survive on grants. And if we can up our chances to get these grants by having professional writers, um, that's what we're, we're really seeking your approval for. And again, it's just a proposal. We bring everything back to you, um, as far as any terms that these companies may propose, um, but we're hoping that you'll give us the go-ahead to do that.
So, the service that you're talking about looking for, they identify the grants and write the grants?
That's what we would request. Because it's very time consuming to search for grants. I spent one day of my 18 years here, one whole day trying to find grants that we would qualify for. We've tried for a couple for the police department with no success. I know Troy has applied for grants with no success. The police department seems to have great success for their operating equipment through FDLE. But otherwise, it's, it's, the grants that we've had the most success for, if it's water quality or water project related, water and sewer, we don't seem to have a problem with that. But anything else, it's, it's, the competition is so great, um, that we just want to try and up our chances for, for anything major, uh, even more stormwater projects, paving Donellen Heights. You know, that's, that's a big one. But again, we're, we're kind of, uh, between a rock and a hard place because a lot of these grants, if you're considered a rural, rural city, you qualify. We are not rural. We do not fall under that category, even though we think we are. We are not all low-income that we think we pretty much fall under, only certain areas of the city. So, it's a, it's a little more difficult than you, you really think it would be for us. But if we can up our chances, um, even going for a legislative appropriation, we can get a representative on our side. You know, let's write a, a paragraph and see if we can get, you know, some funding for that. So that's really what we're seeking.
Sure, okay.
And is this completely different and separate from the grant writing line in the contract with MT Costly?
It's really the same thing, um, but, and I, I don't know what MT Costly charges, but I think we should check other companies as well to see what they would charge us. You know, go out for, for the different, um, uh, proposals to see maybe we can do a little better than MT Costly. You know, for example, Fred Fox, we've done a lot of business with Fred Fox and Associates. His area of specialty is community development blood grants. One of the reasons why he applies for cities at no cost is he hopes to get the contract where DEO pays for grant administration services if a grant is awarded. And we have given that to Fred Fox and Associates. So there are things that maybe can be negotiated if another grant provides for grant administration of the project, meaning a lot of reports have to be done, a lot of surveys with, with CDBG. We have to hire somebody to help us with those grants. Because they're HUD-based. HUD has such strict requirements on, um, minority businesses, women-owned businesses, and reporting for those. So there's so many requirements. If we can get some people on our side, we, we might do better. And, and then again, if we try it for a couple of times and, and you don't want to continue with something like that, we don't have to. We're not committed.
I don't see a downside, unless I'm missing something.
I, I don't either. And I, I would say, like I say, you were talking about Palatka, they have five different vendors. Being the kind of business I was in, I was used to bidding for stuff and you get, you, you'll find that there's a lot of more people out there if you just let it be known. You know, I would start with whatever list you may have from Palatka or any other town around here. And I say, we ask them all, but make it very clear that, you know, they're going to get paid only if we win. And then we get to look and see what percentage or hours or whatever they're going to charge. Or like Fox apparently gets an administration of the funds, so they may not charge any, so...
That's if, now, to clarify, like with CDBG, for a brand administrator, you have to go out for RFP.
Right.
That's one of, one of their rules.
Okay.
And...
I would say we go with that.
It's like a, a shot in the dark.
I don't, I'm like, Tim, I don't see a downside in this. And, you know, that, you know, if we don't like it, we can terminate it and if we like it, we go with it and just get as many of them in here as you can, let us look at it or let you look at it.
But you do want us to specify that there would be no fee for their initial applications?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
And, and let me just say, after we get that initial, if we find that we're not getting the service we want, we may have to change that, but I would rather start with zero.
Okay.
Okay. All right. Anybody else? We good? Okay. Moving right along. Jan's favorite subject.
One of two. Um, Counsel, I've given you a budget calendar, um, that pretty much mirrors, um, our annual calendars with a few more extra meetings. This not only allows for more discussion with, with Counsel, but allows me time to make any necessary changes, um, to the data that I'm providing you. And I'm hoping you've seen this and maybe these dates look okay. If you, if you want to make any changes, I can take it back and, and look at the days. Now, some of these are very specific to the trim process. So depending on which date you would want to change, I may need to go back and look at the trim calendar because the, the state says X number of days between meetings, it's got to be advertised and no more than three to five days, you have to hold a meeting after that advertisement shows in the paper. So, um, the workshops are pretty flexible, but the actual meetings, when you're certifying your taxable value and the meeting, meetings in September are pretty fixed. But other than that, I, I think it can be kind of open. We tried to schedule, you know, some workshops on the same days as your regular meetings, so don't have to make a contract. So if you don't have any comments, I'll go ahead and put this out on the website, but if you need a little more time and you can tell me Monday, you know, what you'd like to do, um, and we can just go from there. But this would be published on our website so that the public knows and they can attend as well as we do put out agendas for, for new workshops.
I'm, I'm all for doing this. Let, I think I'll study these dates. I kind of glanced at them, but I like the idea of starting now. That, I hate waiting till August, September to jam all this stuff through and we're scrounging looking for every, what we're looking at. I'd rather start early and get something. I do have a request when we do it this year. In addition to whatever budget information you provide us, and I got this from a little birdie, so I can't tell you who, but, um, I would like to get a schedule, if there's one available, that shows us by item what a department would have spent in the last three to five years on a particular item. Is there a schedule you produce that does that?
The budget schedule that I produce is, when you say by item...
Well, by department, you...
Well, well, by department, by item, do you mean like if the item is operating supplies? How much have they spent?
How much detail?
Well, how much have they spent on operating supplies? That I can give you over three to five years. In fact, it's a document that I'm sure you've seen, a long, long document.
That's what I'm asking for.
And in fact, I've had a request to produce that already, even though we haven't completed our audit.
No, no, I, I get that, right. But what I'm saying is I think it would help all of us as we're trying to review the next year budget. If we can kind of see, at least with me being accountant, I'd like to see what have we been spending on this item and then how does that compare to, you know, what we're budgeting and if it's lower or higher, kind of get an idea of why.
Sure. And that's something that, that we ask.
No, no, I get it.
When, when it's submitted, it's like, okay, well, you didn't spend, you know, that much these past two years, why do you need it?
Sure.
And if, if it's justified, it'll go, go to you. So I've already been asked for something as a, um, a budget update that I'm going to provide you all on Monday. I will give you that big long document, your un-audited act results for last year.
It doesn't have to be audited, I just want to see it. So again, so as we start getting familiar with it, if, you know, in one year, like two years ago, something was a lot bigger, a lot smaller, we can start trying to figure out what happened that year.
And I can do that, at least the plan, I think right now with, at our first budget workshop, I can do something like that. I will put in the proposed budget and show you our current fiscal year, where we're at as of...
Whatever day, yeah.
As of March 6th, June, May, whatever. I think I started last year, I think I showed as, as of May.
Okay, yeah.
And that way you can, you can see what are they asking for right off of that and what have they spent over the past 70 years. So absolutely, that can be provided.
Again, I don't want you to go out and create something brand new, I just want something you, you've been asked to do.
Yeah, no, that's, that's no problem.
All right.
So if, if you can think about this, let me know of any changes, because if you're going to change any dates, I just need a little bit of time to go back and look at the trim calendar from last year, because the new one isn't out yet, but you can, I can, I can put it into this year's time frame.
Any other questions up here? Good? Okay. All right, next item. MT Costly.
Uh, Jan's other thing, did you mention that, um, your first quarter update will be on Monday?
Yes, that's what I've been talking about.
Okay, I was just trying to...
Yeah.
Okay. All right, MT Costly.
And I will provide you backup, uh, within a day or so. So you can have it before the date to, to...
Goodies. All right, the agreement with Mr. MT Costly.
Yes, so the current agreement with, that we have with them contains a clause for increases on an annual basis, um, based on department labor rates, um, increases. And so they are proposing, um, currently, where this was $90 an hour, it's gone to 100. Code enforcement, I believe, was 60, it's gone to 80, which we don't have to use them for code enforcement now that we have CHAD. And then there are other services, um, professional planning, grant writing, and GI, that rate was $90 an hour. It would become 98, 80. And I think residential, commercial inspection, I think those were the same as the building inspection, which was 90. So, these are based on the current agreement and what was agreed to in the current agreement as far as annual increases. So this would be, uh, the Second Amendment to the MT Costly agreement.
Y'all got any thoughts on this? I do, but y'all go ahead. You good? Okay.
No, I got, I got thoughts of it. What services do we presently use?
The primary service that we use them for is building inspection. We used them briefly for code enforcement for two cases that, um, we had to have help with.
Okay.
But, having CHAD, I, I don't, I don't see us having the need to, um, use those services again. Other than their building department services, um...
Is that Jimmy?
There are several inspectors.
Jimmy was the one. I think his name's Richard now.
Well, there's, there's actually three. There's Jimmy, Dallas, and, um, Richard. So, and they, they rotate, sometimes Jimmy here, sometimes it's Richard here, um, if they're not available in Dallas. Dallas is really, I think, more in a supervisory position now where he used to be here more often, but he will come on occasion, but, um, I would say for the majority of the time, they send Jimmy out.
Are we happy with the service?
I have heard of a couple of complaints, um, about them, um, just recently. I wouldn't say that I've heard anything for any length... I wouldn't say that I've heard anything for any length of time, but there were a couple of issues that were brought up recently by a, a business owner that was trying to open a business and had to go through multiple inspections.
Okay. Let me ask this. Are there any other options out there that we think we might want to pursue?
Well...
Something similar to what Jan's going to do with the...
Well, yeah, you, you would need to do an RFP, building inspection services, which we've done before. That's how M.T. Cosley was selected initially. So you could do that if your issue is not necessarily with the vendor, but it's with the people that they're sending out.
Okay.
You can request a different person.
Okay.
So it, it's just really a matter of, you know, are you, do you really want, we just went out the bid two years ago.
That was my next question. How long ago did it go? Okay, got it.
Yeah, it's, it's not even three years.
Oh, good. Thank you. Again, in my line of work, these kind of things happen to me all the time, especially when you see increases like this. Again, I'm not saying we need to change them. I'm just saying maybe since they went up, you know, 20% in some cases, we ought to at least get another bid from somebody, just see, is this an industry-wide thing or is it, is this what it costs now to get it done? Kind of where I am. And that, I focus really on the increase. Personally, building my house, I had an issue with one of these gentlemen, but I understand the other ones are doing better. It's really not the company. To me, it's just seeing the increase. That should we have an RFP for somebody else to just see if, because $100 an hour is really what it's going to cost. And if it is, then we just stay with them or do whatever. But I think, I think we need to do an RFP.
Would you want us, rather than going through the expense of preparing and advertising an RFP and, you know, would you, would you be okay with us maybe just reaching out for some other cities and seeing what they are paying?
Anything.
For building inspection services? Because that's a, a pretty intensive process and considering the staff shortage that I'm about to experience.
No, no, I get it. I just think we ought to check these prices is where I'm going.
Yeah.
And if they're the way to do it and we just get on the phone and call some places and say, you know, what are your standard rates for building inspection and which is what we use and whether that's commercial or homes, that is that rate in line with what we'll get charged? And if it is, then I'm going to be good.
And then if we find that it's not, then then go out and bid.
Exactly. I would rather see us do that before we sign this agreement. If we can do that. Because I noticed they had a March 1 date.
Yeah, the effective date, well, they actually increased their rates January 1st, but didn't put us on notice until just more recently. So they had to revise their agreement for March 1st because we couldn't go back and back charge people for permits and things like that because of the increase. But, yeah, we can do that. We, I, I'll see how much we can get to you before Monday afternoon.
And again, I don't, if it's a big process to do an RFP, then let's don't do that.
Well, I'm just saying, we might could reach out to some other cities and get you some of that information by Monday afternoon, but I don't know how much, you know, because we're dependent on them to respond to us.
Sure.
That's out of our control. But the way I understand it, in the agreement that we've already assigned, we agreed to these increases. And I don't know that we have a choice but to accept them until we decide to go a different route.
Sure. Okay. All right.
So do you want me to, I'll put this on the regular agenda? Okay.
You would, ma'am? All right. Any other questions on that one? We're going to flip the page, folks. We're at Boat Ramp Launch, Launch Fee, Andrew Hind, discussing ordinance.
Yes, Counsel, you may recall that at the previous council meeting at, I believe, this first reading of the ordinance, there was some discussion regarding the civil municipal code fines and the amounts being insufficient. And as I recall, the police chief had coordinated with the little clerk of courts and said there was no issue in increasing those fines since then. And I was instructed to come back and bring back a proposal regarding rates that counsel may find more appropriate. I consulted with the chief and these rates are for these, this version of the ordinance you have in front of you incorporates some of these new proposed fines. Certainly, counsel is at its, its leisure to change any of these, but it starts on line 85 and runs through line 96 with first fine for first violation being $100, then a repeat, first repeat violation being $150, and then $300 thereafter. And so that's been written into the ordinance. This would come back for second reading, Mandy, I believe, in March. Is that right? So in the interim, certainly it's up for, for your discussion to determine how you'd like to see these rates go, if this is sufficient or if you'd like to see something else. That's all I have.
Is paneling high enough? Will you be with it?
I'll do it.
I, I like these better. I mean, to me, when we're charging, what was it, $25 maybe to part and only $50 for the fine, that, that is, what, why would they pay it? I mean, that was, I think this will, you know, get the point on, you know, you violate it once, it's 100 bucks. You do it twice, it's 150, and then the hammer comes down, it's going to be 300 bucks. And hopefully, it's not that we want to make money with this. We want to just get people to buy, buy the rules, whatever we come up with. So I'm, I'm totally happy with this. I, I think this is fine.
So those are the only changes. I think if counsel is happy with the numbers, then it could just be scheduled for second reading?
The fact that they proposed it is people will see and know it's not...
It's not like surprise, surprise. Yeah, got it. Now, I did notice the launch fee we didn't set, which that's fine to...
That would be via resolution.
Right. I got, I got that. I know you, you want to talk about that in a second. But I want, and that's okay to do it like that?
Yes.
We don't, we actually put it in this? Okay. Okay, Jan?
As far as the launch fees, you really don't want to include that in an ordinance because then you have to go through the whole process.
We may change it.
Or if it's a resolution, it can, it can have to be put in if you want to adjust.
No, no, I, I get that.
Now, my suggestion is that we at least start talking about fees so we can get a resolution put together and maybe we can adopt the fees at the same time as the final reading of the ordinance.
Sure.
So that's something that we might want to talk about initially. Now, I know we don't have a decision on what kind of collection package we're doing. That's what I wanted to run by you tonight. Mandy, can you bring up those pictures that I dropped in the ordinance, in the same folders in the ordinance? I did do some research on an honor box. I still need to get one more, at least one more quote, but I wanted to, and this will be able to respond to the company right now. I did, I reached out to Marion County and he gave me some contacts. Marion County does use honor boxes, but because of a couple of areas that is high theft, they are moving to a kiosk for a couple of their areas. But for an honor box, it would be something like this. Now, this, this is a part. That shorter piece goes inside that taller piece. That insert is what would have to come out. Every time we want to empty, empty the box, it does weigh about 28 to 30 pounds. There can be a dual control system where somebody goes and unlocks the box, brings it to, say, City Hall, and it's witnessed those envelopes being taken out and counted. Can you go to the next picture? That front little piece is where the envelopes would be located for people to come and take, and they can be numbered. This company does provide numbered envelopes. If we wanted to get a little fancier and have our logo or name on it, then we have to find envelopes elsewhere. Now, Marion County did tell me, and of course they have more volume, that by going to a kiosk, they will save $4,000 in envelope costs. Two sizes, a smaller honor box, which holds, will hold 50 to 80 envelopes, will cost, at least right now, between how long it takes us to, to order this, $2,810. The larger one, which is what you see in front of you, I'm sorry, Mandy, can you go to the, I'm not sure what picture you're at. I'm sorry, the first picture was actually the larger of the two. The second picture was the smaller, which holds 50 to 80 envelopes. And the smaller one is $2,810, the larger one is 3,275. Both of these quotes include shipping from Washington State. That's where this company is located. And with this company, they're between a four to 16 week turnaround. They're hoping within the next month or so to be able to turn it around quicker, but that's just the way things, things are. So with another, if I can get another quote, we can see if we can turn it around faster. It's, we're at the mercy of the companies.
Got it. Now, you said 50 to 80, was that the smaller box?
No, it's the smaller box.
Okay, the bigger box, how many did it have?
120.
120. I don't know, we never had that.
Yeah, was this the same company that, the name of the company that you got from Marion County?
Yes.
Okay. So this is where they get their boxes from?
Yes, this is one of the companies. The other company they get their, their equipment from has not responded. I will reach out to them.
Clear.
But this, now this, these boxes, she explained that they really are very secure. Keep scrolling, Mandy, so we can, okay. This is the back of the unit, that, that hole right there. There are, I'm not the technical person, okay? From what I gathered, it was like padlocks that actually anchor that internal unit. And she said somebody with not too big a hand reaches up and is able to maneuver the locks.
I got it.
And then there's a cover that is also padlocked that goes over that to just help secure it. You've got sophisticated criminals. You know, if somebody wants to break into something, if they know what they're doing, they're going. But, so they have tried to make this as secure as possible. And, and Charles, I'm sorry, I can't think of his last name, Marion County, he didn't say they had a real problem with vandalism, but a couple of areas they did.
Right.
With our and Boe Ranch being very dark at night, I'm not sure what we may or may not expect.
Right. Was it have to do with that?
Right. So now, I want to, I want to bring something else forward. I received a call from John Oglesby with Safepark. He asked if you would all be interested in, now they were providing a kiosk and it would be a, a credit debit card type transaction. They would provide security cameras so we could monitor and enforce, because something like this, enforcement is not going to be as, I want to say proactive. He, he wanted to know if you all would be interested in a no-cost option to the city. Now, I said, what do you mean, no-cost option? And he, he was proposing a revenue share of 50/50. They would provide everything, just like they originally presented. We would not have to put out a dime, but they would share in the revenue, 50/50.
So then they buy the machine?
They do everything. The reporting, I would get the reporting like I had asked for. We would have cameras. We could, we could, our police department would have a real time on their cell phones to be able to tick it, non-payers. With that option, we might experience more revenue because of the enforcement aspect. That's just a thought. It's not, you know, I have no concrete evidence, but it just depends on what you all would like to do.
I, you know, until you said this, I was for doing something simple like this at first and seeing how it worked or how people stealing or whatever. The other thing I'm still struggling with on this whole thing is the idea of somebody swipes a credit card and they can't find a place to park their boat. And, and that's going to be a problem. Whereas to me, if we had it set up such that where you pay, it's like up near the parking lot, then they would know whether they could park before they do it. Otherwise, they're going to get their boat out of the water. See, my concern is this refund. How do we handle the refund piece with that? And to me, this may be simple, they just don't put the envelope in there.
They would, we would refund their credit card, just, but it would have to be during business hours.
Well, see, that's, you know, and I, and I'm, I'm more thinking on Saturday and Sunday or, you know, whatever, it's just going to be a pain. But, you know, 50/50 option...
And, and the enforcement piece, if you look at the, the violation fees, and if enforcement is in fact much better, which obvi, to me, obviously it's going to be.
Right.
Then half of, of $300, that's $150.
Oh, I guess, and there's no cost.
Yeah. So it's just something to think about. It's, it's really whichever way you all would like me to, to move forward. But Safepark, apparently they really want our business.
They want it. Why don't we hold out longer, take a look?
Also, you know, with kiosks, it may be better to put a kiosk at City Beach as well, and we don't have to have an attendant there. So we could move, you know, to other things.
Good.
With, with a, with a kiosk program. With the honor box, yes, you do, you know, we here at City Hall would have to wait for assistants to come collect the envelopes because I personally cannot carry up this hill...
No.
30 pounds.
No.
It doesn't include cash.
No, you can't.
I, I physically can't do that. So, which I'm sure we could get somebody, you know.
I'm sure we could find one of our policemen to walk down there and do that.
Absolutely. So...
But no, I, I think the problem I have, and I know, Tim, you had with the other using the kiosk, was honestly the amount they were charging. It was just...
Well, yes.
It would, it got really, when you really dug into the numbers, it was like, this isn't paid for itself. This, this did nothing.
And, and when he proposed a 50/50 revenue share without really knowing what our fees are going to be...
That's pretty good.
They could even experience a loss.
Right. Because they got to buy the machine and do their...
They're doing everything.
I'd like to make comment.
Sure.
My, my stand is we start with the simple technology. It works for Marion County, it works for the state parks, Army Corps of Engineers. They have 4,000 parks and day use sites in the country, and they all use the honor box. I just checked on that again last night because I said in my $80 lifetime use privileges. If it works for them, and they've been doing it for 30, 40 years, I would think this is how we would start. If it doesn't work out, then we can move on. The other thing that, about dealing with the company with the kiosk, there's no saying what might happen to their business. They might sell it to another business and everything would change.
Well, you have a contract too.
Pardon?
You have a contract too.
Yeah, I know you have a contract, but they would be bought out or something. When our yearly contract, whatever dissolves, then a new company could change the percent or whatever.
Well, they could, and if, if you didn't want to continue with it, they come in, they take their equipment, and we choose another option. One thing I will say, Marion County has a park attendant that helps with enforcement. And, and I know other parks that have park attendants. We, unless you want to hire somebody to be a park attendant...
You don't necessarily need the park attendant because as I was just saying, the state parks, nobody's around. You can't find a ranger with a search warrant on some of the, at some of these parks because they're understaffed. It works for them.
But it's all to you, whichever you would like me to move forward.
No, I'll crunch the numbers on a 50/50.
No, I'll crunch the numbers on a 50/50 split, take a look at it. Tendling with a Jan's option as a starting point.
The only question I had, excuse me, how long would it take to get the kiosk? You're talking about so many weeks to get the other one. How long would it take to get the kiosk?
Oh, boy, you told me a while back. I want to say six weeks, but I'd have to ask again. And I'll find out.
Find that out, okay. That was, again, the 50/50 with no cost to us, sounds pretty good. Especially if they put cameras and everything else up, that we don't have to worry with.
It's on the month.
And, but again, my reaction was go simple, but, you know, that may be a good deal. Because we're at $3,200 or $3,000 on these boxes, no matter what.
It's going to be more, because you need signage too.
Well, I know.
I have no idea how much signage would cost. That I didn't, I didn't go that far.
Okay. All right, okay.
And, I'm sorry, we'd be responsible for installation. They give you the specs, they tell you how to do it, but we would have to have a contract with somebody to install it. I don't know if our public works people could do that. So it's not just the $3,500 or the $200.
I got it. Right.
So it's, I'm on a ballpark, let's just say it could be up to $6,000, but that's it, aside from envelopes.
Right.
So it's not a big investment.
Somebody with a big pickup truck would drag it down the street.
Well, there you go.
Whatever. They can do that with kiosks.
Don't you have a kiosk?
Well, $4,000 for envelopes kind of shop, yeah.
That was Marion County. But they have a lot of parks.
Okay.
They have a lot of that too. So don't try and compare us.
Right.
To that, because we're not, we're not going to have that much.
Okay.
Because we don't have the parking spaces.
Is it practical to get a number, dollar figure, or what we think that we would have? And?
I have no idea.
Okay, gotcha.
Because we don't know how many users we have. So that's just something. Now, we can work it into the, you know, the cost of the launch fee, once we really see what we have and what we're dealing with. Because we want to be able to cover our costs. We want to have a little bit of money to put away in a reserve to help with maintaining. But this is all so brand new, and not knowing how many people, you know, do we get 500 in a month? Maybe we get more, maybe we get a lot less.
Right. I think enough of us use the boat ramp that we're going to be able to get pretty close to what we see. The other thing is there's 26 trailer spots. There are 18 in the main lot over here, and then the remainder in the overflow.
26?
26 positions is all, is all we can hold. And then it would determine how many times we think those spots turn over in a day. So I think we're going to be able to get pretty close to what the boat ramp can handle.
And I've seen some take up some of the new spaces.
Oh, right, right, I'm with you.
Plus kayakers.
Yeah, right, that's my other thought was.
Who park on this side of the parking lot.
Right. And they can use the, in the overflow parking lot, there's twice that amount of numbers for just regular parking lanes that the kayakers and such.
So, you know, I think we'll do pretty well, but like you were saying, refunds. That's something, even on a weekend, you know, you have people pulling in. I'm not sure, I'd have to get an opinion on where we would, if we do an honor box, where would we locate that for a kiosk? Because you were saying, you know, talking about refunds. Because we would have to have card present, maybe not for a refund. I'd have to talk to, if we end up using Safepark, I'd have to ask them how we could work that out.
Sure.
If we needed to refund something. They may need the receipt, like a receipt number, to be able to process something like that. But I'll check it out.
Sure. Julian, you got a question? You good?
I don't. It seems like we've talked about this for a long time, and now we've narrowed down to some options, but there's still a lot of numbers of what it's going to take to install, and how long it's going to take. So I think we just have to put all the numbers together and come back again. I'll be waiting to hear Tim crunching the number on the 50/50. I'm really a fan of keeping things simple, but I'll wait to get the.
And as far as install, I'd have to rely on somebody from Public Works.
Sure.
To help with something like that. I'm not sure who we can call.
Sure. Sure, but all details to work out before we make a decision.
The install would basically be a concrete pad, sedge anchors, and that. So I believe that would be somewhere around probably a $1,000 type ticket, not any more than that.
Okay, so could I use that estimate for install for the honor box?
If Wally signed it.
No, no, I think that's reasonable. I mean, if you put bolts in it and have it bolted down in a big pad of concrete, so it can't drag it off, you know, I think that's what it's going to be.
And there are specs included.
I'm sure.
With this honor box. You know, they did submit that.
I don't think a thousand dollars.
So if we could say a $1,000 on top of that. And they did give me a price on the envelopes. I'll have to go back, I'll just go back and look.
Can you send their specs out and the information you have electronically?
Sure.
All right. Okay, sat in on this.
That's all.
Getting down toward the end. All right, Jan, you're up.
Okay, a couple months ago, I gave some information about possibility of City of Denellen, because we are a municipality. FWC says a municipality has the right to enact ordinances concerning any waterways that they control through law enforcement, which fits us. However, Andrew Hand, and I have had quite a discussion, and also have done some research. It is unfortunate that we're probably about a year late in trying to enact this ordinance of not allowing personal watercraft entry into the Rainbow River. And the reason why, it's political, of course. Back in April of 2022, there was a rewriting of regulations that are involved with law enforcement on waterways in Florida. And it so happens that the legislative person that is head of this committee owns a marina in Fort Myers. And he has a lot of friends who are dealers, sellers. They trade these things like cars now. The prices keep going up and up on them, they keep getting bigger and bigger, and it's one of the biggest industries in Florida. Let me re-say that. Of all the 50 states that have waterways, and you can find personal watercraft out there, Florida is number one. It's a huge, huge growing business here. It's approaching $3 billion in sales, that's in the next three years. Therefore, they have a lot of, these people who are involved with personal watercrafts have a lot of coal in Tallahassee. So in April of last year, they wrote an ordinance that says you cannot discriminate against personal watercraft. So it looks like it's a dead end, unfortunately. We're a year late. Yep, the other thing is I went to Rainbow River Conservation Meeting and made a presentation, and they had no interest in backing this. The current president of Rainbow River Conservation, Jerry Rogers, owns a personal watercraft, and there's also another person that resides within Luco that has a personal watercraft. So what would we do if you already live on the river and you have one? We're going to say, sell it, get rid of it? So I'd say it's a no-go with this.
Sure.
In that conversation. The other is good news, the kayak launch. Again, February 1st, the application was opened by FWC. The grant is called VIP, Voter Improvement Program. The state of Florida last year legislated, again, $1.25 million to give grants to municipalities and cities to construct docks and launches, and boat launches, if any socks. Okay, or it could be marine, it could be on river, it could be on a lake, doesn't matter. They have to appropriate that money. And Marion County hasn't gotten any of those grant monies through the Voter Improvement Plan in like 18 years. Okay, I checked on that. You go online and see what municipalities. It looks like if you apply, you're going to get the money. Okay, all you have to do is state your case, your budget, and that would involve some research, not just with setting up the dock, but also a walkway to get to it. Okay, and again, as I brought up the last time we discussed this, the area where we would place this ADA compliant, Americans with Disabilities Act compliant boat launch, I'm sorry, kayak and canoe launch would be to the left of the boat ramp. There's plenty of room there, don't have to take out a tree. And there's a slope there that's very gradual. I don't see where we would have to dump in a bunch of rock, or crushed rock, or whatever. There were three companies that we took a look at. The one that is used at our state parks now is called Easy Docks. It's a modular floating dock with a launching system built into it. It is a patented construction, thank you. So I don't know if that's it. Okay, can you go on mute, on line?
I have three answers.
Oh, there we go. That was a better picture. That first one with the long runway, I don't think that was it. If you go online to Oclakoni, Oclakoni River State Park Boat Launch Image or Kayak Launch Image. Anyway, it has, it's got handrails, it has a launch assist paddle support notches, it has two height transfer benches. In other words, people who are vertically challenged like me need a different setting to get in and out that other people who are much larger need. It's got handrails that the user uses to either go down the ramp or up. Very user-friendly. It is constructed of U D resisted polyethylene composite material and rust resistant hardware. If you go to Oclakoni, O C H.
I'm on the state park site.
Yeah.
Jane, can I just question?
If you just Google Oclakoni River State Park Kayak Launch Image, a really good picture comes up. I can send it to you all. It's not at the state park site.
So this goes on the left side of the boat ramp right there?
Right.
Okay, not the right side?
And it's a modular unit, it has the dock plus the launching system.
So you're saying if it's modular, if we, say, use it, put it in, and then we decide to change the ramp, we could take it up and use it?
It's yours to do whatever you want with.
Is that it, Jane?
Again, it's Oclakoni River.
I'm there.
Yeah, State Park.
Is that the photo that you're looking at?
There's a really good picture under images. It's not at the park website. I just saw it this afternoon. It's not on YouTube, it's on Oclakoni River State Park Kayak Launch Image.
While we're searching, can I make a comment or a question? So let's say everybody's agreeable to doing this. I think everybody is agreeable that we need a kayak launch. So the next step is getting a grant?
The step is to get with Easy Dock. They would send a representative here, take a look at what we have and make recommendations. That's it, right there. You got it. Okay, that's what we're looking at. Okay, and so that's the launching device. Notice the handrails, it's got rollers and so on. It's very, takes very little physical effort to either get into the water or pull yourself back out. So that's exactly what we would be looking at. And the representative is in Tampa. This is the biggest company in America. They put in Easy Docks all the way from Maine all the way down to Key West. A lot of it is private property, but they work with municipalities on a regular basis. Their rep in Tampa is Bobby Anderson. He would be willing to come up here, take a look at our site, and make us a presentation or whatever, work with them, see if we would have to have some kind of a formal engineering site plan. I think Troy would best answer that question. The package includes not only the structure, but also they bring it and they put it in, and there again would be, how do you anchor this thing? So that's what they would have to figure out. Do they could not do that over the phone? Bobby Anderson would come up here, take a look at the bottom of our river, what kind of pilings would we have to put in, so on. The pilings are part, are not an extra expense. The pilings are part of whatever they would say would be the total cost of the project for us. So that technical aspect would be pretty well covered. What would be left over for the City of Denellen would be put a sidewalk down from the parking lot. There's already a handicap spot on the left there, right at the ramp.
Jane, can I just ask a couple pointed questions, so I can ensure where we're going? Are you asking us to come to a consensus about which company that we're going to use? For the, let me, can I finish my question?
Thank you.
Which company we're going to use to decide upon the dock, so that we can submit it with the grant? Or are we, what's the order, and what are you asking us to do as it relates to Easy Dock?
What I have done also is gotten with Dorsey DeMaster, the executive director, Florida Paddling Association paddles all over the state of Florida, and they are very familiar with this system.
And just that's from what you're looking for us to decide upon?
Yeah. We want to go to the experts. I know nothing, okay? Never put one in. These are the people that use these, see them, and they say, forget about the other two companies. So the other two companies were AccuDock and kayakdock.com. And their facility, or their structure that they're offering, costs more and is not as user-friendly. Okay, so I don't think we, because the grant is, the grant offered is going to give us the money for whatever the city says is the best product for use by the public.
Come back to you here. What do we need? How do we act?
Okay, so what I'm doing is giving you the information. What we need to do is go on with the grant application.
Do we submit Easy Dock and associate with the grant application?
We need a budget.
Yeah.
If we can get this company to tell us, to give us a price, to go for agreement, we can't commit to using this company. We have to, depending on how much this is going to cost, we either have to just get a couple more quotes.
Right.
And then bring that back to council, or we go out for bid. Again, depending on how much all this costs. So hopefully, it's just quotes. And if there are three companies in the state of Florida or the world that do this kind of thing, we ask them, please, submit a quote for this project. And then council decides on that. So you're not committing to a company at this point, but we need a budget. And if we have to have an expert say, this is what you need. And based on their. And based on their cost for the project, that's what we would go out for the grant. Am I correct in, in what you're asking?
Except that I would like to say that once again, because it's ADA compliant, I think the city of Dan Allen needs to offer our kayak users a, a facility that is the very best.
And that's what we would wanna budget for.
Well, here Jan said, we gotta follow.
We guess. So we would ask this company, please come in and tell us, how much is this for the cost for, for what we want? ADA compliant, the rails, everything.
It's just on the screen, right?
And then we take those figures and then we can apply for a grant.
Sure.
You can't apply for a grant guessing what a cost is gonna be. They know costs change depending on how long it takes to award the grant. So it's possible if the prices change in between contract award and grant award, you can typically have a grant amended to include an increase. So we just, we need a budget.
Yeah. And the discussion, I think we're at 16 minutes. We're losing some of the public. What do we need to do to move forward?
What do we need to do is get EZ Dock here and take a look at our site and, and have, have their guy tell us exactly what it's gonna cost. Give us an invoice. Here's what you get for X number of dollars. And also we have to include that grant again, the sidewalk. I mean, if you're.
But I think today we're talking about the boat ramp, so I think if there's no cost associated with him coming to do it, I think that maybe whatever kind of consensus we need to move forward and, and wrap this up would be helpful.
Just want you to know that the grant opened February 1st and it closes March 30th.
Is there another cycle for this grant?
No, this is it. In 2023, that's it, one time.
Okay. I agree. I think we just get them in here, see how, what we're even talking about. And then I'm, I'm like you, we're gonna have to get more than one bid on this before we can do something.
Right, but we're.
But let's just figure out what it's gonna cost. So I'm all for it. Let's, let's keep going.
Sure.
Good?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And again, the grant is not a dollar to buy a match. It is a specifically, put in your budget, present them your plan. There's questions, certain questions and how you answer them, you get points and so on. Go online to actually a very simple grant to apply for.
All right.
Are, are, are we, are you guys giving staff any kind of direction as far as what you want us to do?
I would say.
Get the other two companies, contact them, get their quotes.
Can you get that information to us?
Sure.
Okay. If you can get the three companies, we'll make the phone calls.
The other two are AcuDocks, much smaller company.
If you can, if you could get us that information, then we'll keep this going. Okay. Just sound like I've got a timer. All right. I'm up last and hopefully this is gonna click. On my agenda, I had put down three, four things that I wanna talk about. One is a short-term rental ordinance. I think I wanna get, before we do anything, I wanna get a consensus for the four members of council. Do we want an ordinance? And I'm being very candid. I mean, I wanna make sure the four of us agree, we really need an ordinance because we obviously thought this, if we all agree we need an ordinance, then I think we can go.
I think that ordinance is long overdue and that we should move forward in putting something in place. Absolutely.
Okay.
I'm with Julianne, like just to add to that. I thought we were gonna have a special meeting because the ordinance is such a big thing and hash out.
Okay. Just, just all of what I'm about to do, okay?
Yeah. My, my comment is with these ordinances placed, I believe some of those ordinances are gonna need to be prioritized because it's already state regulated.
Right.
But we need to make sure absolutely Marion County Fire Department and so on.
Okay. So you're, you're good. Let's keep this going.
Let's keep it going, but my big, big question, this number one, is how's it gonna be enforced?
Sure. I got that. All right. Having said that, we were gonna have a meeting about short-term rentals, I think sometime this month, or yeah, it was this month, but with our mayor's departure, I asked the staff to stop. And the reason is, I think the, this is gonna be a very important ordinance for this town because very candidly, there are two different groups. There's a group that really want this and there's a group that's keen on this, okay? I think before we vote on an ordinance, we need to have a full complement of mayor and council. That doesn't mean it should stop. I'm just saying, I don't think we really take a vote until everybody's sitting here, okay? And having said that, and I'll get to this in a second on goals and priorities, there are some things I think can be done to keep this moving so it doesn't just languish and die. And I wanna take on that responsibility to keep it moving, okay? Like what do fire inspections cost? What do building inspections cost? What does all this entail and who's gonna enforce it? I, I get that. I'm gonna take on, this is my responsibility to keep this moving. But what I'm trying to tell y'all, and if you agree with this, is we don't really sit down and have a big workshop on all this until we got a full council. And if y'all agree with that, I'll keep it going.
Okay.
I agree with that.
And again, I just, I think we need every seat filled for these kind of decisions that are gonna affect a lot of people going to play. But I will keep this going the best I can. And so as soon as we fill this position, we can have a workshop and hammer this thing. And hopefully I'll have more information and understand this better than I can help lead that discussion.
Great.
Okay? All right.
The only comment I have, and I'm not looking to make it burden someone, is there, and if there's not, that's fine. Would there be a, it doesn't need to be an answer now, I guess, either. Is there a way to communicate with the rest of us? Here's what you've explored and here's what you found out so that we come in and we're ready to go based on what you have, the new information that you have found out?
What I will try to do and to approve is when I gather this and get it in a point where I can.
Sure.
Share it, is pass it through you and let you distribute it to everyone. Now, is that gonna be okay with Sunshine?
Some position changes are allowed. The very best way to do it would be to put it all together and then put it on an upcoming agenda so that way all council has access to it. It's all part of an agenda. It's not need, you know, communications otherwise that are being passed and forth. And then council knows, hey, I don't respond to this, it'll be discussed at a meeting.
Sure. Okay. Well, that was the point I, I wanna make sure, because my thought is, like I said, I'm gonna start attacking this thing and I've accumulated a whole binder stuff and, and go back through it, read it, kinda point out to myself what I think's critical. And again, I think from our perspective as a city of Dan Allen, we gotta know what this is gonna cost, the city.
Right.
How we're gonna enforce it and who's gonna enforce it.
Right. Those are my biggest concerns.
And then in addition to that, we'll look at all the ordinance that we're proposing and, you know, what is state law, what is not state law and try to get all straight. But I will take the lead on this and keep it moving.
I'll just say, Wally, thank you for kind of trying to really look at the logistics. I, I've really taken a lot of time to look at the nuts and the bolts of what is state and what is city and what are we trying to finagle to make it fit in to our communities? So I'll actively be working on that while you're working on logistics.
No, I don't, I hope you understand, you guys have got knowledge on this, keep going.
Absolutely.
It's just, I've gotten into it and I've really learned that there's a lot to this. And there's a lot that, like you say, what is state law? How far does it go? But I think the one thing I think the city needs to understand is, okay, how are we gonna enforce this thing? And how do we enforce it and what does it cost us to enforce it versus the, the whole? Okay?
Can I say one more thing?
Sure.
In the interim, as we're kind of working behind the scenes on this, I just wanna encourage the people in the public, the short-term rental owners and the residents who are affected and everybody in between, to keep reaching out and talking to us. I sometimes get emails that say, I don't feel that I have sufficient voice in short-term rentals, but really your voice can be writing to us, calling us. I have after hours, our office hours where people are coming to talk about it. So there's no reason that people can't be expressing their concerns or discussing this as we continue to work behind the scenes and wait for a full council.
The next thing I wanna talk about is, I think at a meeting three or four meetings ago, we put four specific projects on hold or suspended them or whatever the terminology we finally ended up with. I think we need to step back, look at those and decide, okay, how do we wanna handle this? Do we want to just stop them? Do we want to crank them back up again? What do we wanna do? And of course, one was Main Street, one was the way signs, one was the solar lighting system, and then the shade yard at City Beach. I know we put them all on pause and please correct me if I'm wrong with this, but I don't think we have signed executed contracts on any of that. Okay? And that was the one thing I wanted to clarify and make sure, because we have signed contracts. I think we're kind of bound to that. But if there's no executed signed tracks on any of this, then I think this council needs to take up the decision, okay, do we wanna? I don't think we keep it on hold. I think we either gotta make a decision of we stop it, suspend it, we're done, or we go on, okay? I would like to have a vote on that at the next meeting, if it's of anyone of y'all. And we take these four items and say, this is what we're gonna do, okay? And I think that is gonna be a vote. It's not gonna be a consent vote. I think we just gotta vote, okay?
Yes, sir.
All right.
So you wanna, you want a, a motion on the agenda for Monday?
And we'll do all four separately?
Yeah. I think, I think it'd be safe for me to do each one of them as a separate, you know, vote to, because we may decide one or two of these, we wanna keep going and the rest of them we don't want to or whatever. I don't wanna get tangled up in that, so we just have a vote to, on each one of them. And he can say the same thing, he just.
See if I can't come up with some sort of proposed motion that sort of fits.
Okay.
What this is going, or he can just make up a motion as he goes.
Okay. All right. Well, there will be a motion. All right. The, next to the last thing I wanna talk about was the goals and priorities we could work on for last workshop. I think this council, I'm about to say something, I'm taking this all crazy, but I think everybody on this council needs to step up and take an item that we discussed, okay? And that's written ahead, many send out what we come up with. The highlights are basically, we got parks and recreation, city budget expenditures, administrative procedures, law enforcement activities, COVID compliance, and roads and sewers. The one that is not on here is short-term rentals, which needs to be on here unless it's buried somewhere. I don't see it. And like I said, I'm gonna take on short-term rentals unless somebody just is known to do that, okay? But I do think each one of us need to take these areas and, and go forward. Now, I'm gonna make some recommendations and if y'all don't like them, please don't do them, okay? Parks and recreations relates a lot with this voting. And I think, Jan, you would be wonderful to take this on.
Well, that would be definitely be my first pick.
Okay. Well, that's the reason I put you there. Okay. Again, if you don't agree.
No, I agree.
Okay. That's where I put you, okay? City budgets and expenditures, Tim, that's you and me. And I don't, I mean, we don't have to operate separately, but with your background and my background, I think you and I focus on this item.
Yes, sir.
Okay? If, if you're good with that.
Yes, sir.
Where do I put you? There you are. Code and comprehensive plan, misdoing, and I would hope that would be something you'd be very interested in.
Yep. Be realistic with your expectations.
I'm, okay. So far I haven't made anybody too many. All right. Roads and sewers and those projects, Tim, I put you down on that.
I take it. I'm good.
Because I know you've worked with Troy, especially on this, this project that we're about to vote on, walking it, seeing it. I understand it, but I know you spent more time.
Yeah. No, I'm way good with that.
Okay. So that's good for you. Now, administrative procedures and, I hate to say it this way, administrative procedures may take more than one of us because there's, it's, it's a lot to it. But I was gonna take the lead on that.
Okay. Mandy wants me to do it also, though, so.
I was saying, wait in me, Tim, but that's okay. I'm, I'm taking the lead on that, okay?
I don't like to be involved in that, but.
Now, honestly, since I got short-term rentals, city budget, administrative, I need somebody to volunteer for it, or I'd take it, but I, as a mayor, I don't wanna take everybody. Who wants to do that?
The chief and his bodyguard does a mind guard.
But again, I, I just think these were the priorities we had and we set them up. And I think as a council, we shouldn't just push all this to the staff. I think we need to be active in dealing with this. And if we need like budgeting, Jan, you will be actively involved. Troy, your department will be actively involved, even though you're not here. But in each one of these, we're gonna ask for your help, but I think the council needs to drive this and change the way that we operate. Because then I think the council understands better what are we doing, okay? And I, and again, I hate to say it this way, but this is the way I ran the business.
I'm with you, boy.
You push it down to the leaders and then you push it down to the staff. Not do that very. So again, I hope the staff understands it's not, we don't like the way you've been doing things, it's that I think you need help and I think with the council's input, this will go smooth.
So they all know what you did.
Well, that's, and I understand, especially being short staff, this is gonna make this go better, I think. So let's try this and hopefully it works. Okay?
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Well, I said it jokingly, I really would like to be involved in administrative procedures.
I, hey, and I'm, and again, if there's two of us on this like budget now, administrative procedures, I'm cool with that. All right. You just, we'll have to talk in meetings. We'll have to do our own thing and come back in meetings and.
Right, right. And we can't drive Mandy crazy with, you want this, I want that.
We just gotta be careful. So, yeah.
Hi, Mayor. A couple meetings ago, Tim had thrown out during his comment that it would be helpful to have a list from staff of just even anonymously some pain points, some things that we can be doing to help them as far as the way that we're asking for information or however things are working. So if it's feasible and reasonable to get that from staff, I would hope that we could get that feedback.
I, I agree.
So if I'm doing something like sending, you know, too many emails or there's something I can be doing differently, I feel like we have to have communication about that.
Sure. I, I totally agree. If there's some way we're doing.
You have to stop squeaking that pen.
I knew that, just 'cause I knew that, okay? But no, I agree. If there's, if we're overwhelming y'all with things, tell us. I will say this, these emails you send out that someone in council has asked us and here's the questions and the list of answers, I love that. Because then I might be thinking the same thing, but after I read what you read, I won't write you an email and ask you something. I know some of them came out today. I was like, I'm about ready to ask that question and it wasn't answered.
Right.
So I would say keep doing that. All of y'all.
It's very informative for me.
Very. Okay.
And I just, I, I just wanna say that, you know, when we get those kind of questions, especially if it's just, if it's not a simple yes or no, and it requires some homework or some research, just be patient with us. It might take us a couple days to get everything together and get it back to you. So if you don't, you know, usually what I try to do is acknowledge that we have received it and, you know, let you know it may be a couple days. So just be patient with us where that's concerned. That helps.
Or if you could even tell us, you know, how long we have it.
Or if you could even tell us, you know, how long we have to answer. It doesn't need to be right away. Sometime this week. In my case, with everything that's going on right now, that would help. Because I'm trying to answer it as quickly as I possibly can. I think you all know that.
Yes.
So, you know, if it's something a little more in-depth, and you can give me a little more time, that'd be great. If you can't, you can't.
Got it.
Perfect.
And my comment is that I can't wait till March when we have those extra days between our initial workshop for the month and our meeting.
Andrew, you have something to say?
Yes, the only thing I'd advise council on, and this, to my knowledge, has never been an issue in the past, but since Sunshine's always such a, you know, a cutting topic, I think it's important that council remember that in asking those questions, you know, that is a one-way communication. It's coming out to council members through Mandy. Now, that helps because staff is that offer between council members. But I think everybody needs to be careful to, you know, keep in mind that if there's going to be, if it, one question typically begs a bunch more questions. And so if you do have questions, it's just important to remember that those questions should not be asked in a way that there's a back-and-forth communication or some kind of, or it can be construed that way, you know, for public to look at it or anyone to look at it. Just something to keep in mind. And if there are questions that need to be answered, you can have those one-on-one, you know, discussions with staff. And then certainly, that can all come out at the meeting. So just keep that in the back of your mind, you know, for Sunshine Law. I think it's just important. I just want to remind everybody of that.
Perfect, perfect. I totally agree. We don't want to get hung up in that. Okay, the last thing I have, and I want everybody's very honest opinion. Okay? First of all, having an agenda with 19 items on it is excessive. It's 8:30, we've been here three hours, we have just, we've got three more to go. But I think we have got to cut these agendas down. My suggestion, and I want your absolute input, is that we have agendas and try, and I'm being very honest here, try to limit it to 10 or 11 items in total. Okay? Now, if there is an item that absolutely has come up, and we've got to get it on there, and we're looking at 10 or 11 already, you know, putting one more item, as long as that's not the norm, I'm good with it. But I think these meetings are just too long. And that's what my point is. And I think if we find, like, short-term rentals, or, you know, the road project or something, we need a separate meeting. We have a separate meeting for that big, long item. But I think we need to start thinking about trying to limit this to 10 items. Okay? And in doing that, I think it'll help. The next thing is, and I'm going to go back to my business background, I think business issues of the city from a previous meeting to the current meeting should be covered first. I, I mean, this thing about the, the whole priorities and goals, that was the last meeting we had. To me, I would have moved that up to the top of this agenda, because we just got too tall about it. We'd have covered it first, we'd gotten it out of the way. But, I mean, it doesn't matter tonight. But what I'm saying, in the future, if we have something like, say, we talk about this road project, the very next meeting, that'll be one of the first things we talk about in a regular meeting or workshop. And that's just, my business background says you do that. The next thing is other business items, like tonight, it seemed like when I was looking at this, and again, please, y'all don't take this as a personal comment. This is just dummy speaking to mine. We've got all the business items at the bottom, and all board reports, head reports, all is at the top, which are pretty important. But I think business needs to be taken care of first. That's just, and another reason I got it this way is I just attended the PPO meeting in Ocala, and that's the way they ran their meeting. They do all the business first, and all the speakers and everything else at the bottom. Now, I understand if the speakers come, they got to sit through the meeting, also encouraging us to get the meeting going, not encouraging them to come sit and leave. Okay? That's just my thought. So what I'm recommending is we start with public comment, but then we go straight into what is the business item we need to discuss, whether it's the dock, the boat dock, group power, whatever. We do all that next. Then we come back to department head, board reports, you know, that kind of stuff is at the bottom. The other thing I'm going to recommend, and this may or may not go over real well, is in the workshop, if you remember, we have public comments at the beginning and the end. I think we need to cut out one of those. Just do. That'll shorten this meeting. Again, I want y'all to think about this. Tell me what's funny. The last thing I got, the last thing, is if an item is on the workshop agenda, and we've covered it, then it should be on the regular agenda when it comes up. But what I'm getting at is if it's not covered in a workshop or a previous meeting, it's not going to be on the regular meeting until it goes through a workshop. Because what I'm getting to is we need to cover the item before we decide to vote on it.
Right, right.
Okay? And what I'm saying is, I don't want to say something hit the regular meeting that we got to vote on, and we've never really discussed it till that night.
No, I agree.
And so what I'm saying is, if it's, if it's something we're going to cover, then we do that. Now, having said that, I know there could be, and I know we've had meetings like this, where literally something comes up, like the day of the meeting, or, you know, two, three days before, but after the workshop, that we have got to get on this agenda. And I don't, I'm not saying this is absolutely, this is the only way we're going to do it. But what I hope is that something just doesn't appear on a meeting that hadn't been covered in a workshop. So these are just the things I've thought about, and I want to get y'all their reaction to that. Please.
My reaction is that I'll think about those things. I'm completely opposed to cutting out public comment out of a workshop. It's at the beginning, it's at the end, and I would like to see it stay that way. As far as how we prioritize the items, I think I would defer to talking with Mandy, just because I don't have that much experience with setting the agenda up. And I think that with all the moving parts, there could be some pitfalls. So that's all I have to say right now. I think that we do have to talk in the future, probably not tonight, about different ways that we can limit the meeting times, like maybe putting timeframes aside of separate items and keeping an eye on the clock, keep things moving. I think that there are ideas that we should be talking about up and coming. I'm not really prepared to talk about them all right now. Thank you.
Yeah, actually, I discussed this one before. I said with Julianne, I think the public needs the opportunity to speak before and at the end. And I'll save you my reasons. I'd like to hear, for most of what you mentioned, I'm saying, let's try it, and we can always adjust. We're not locked into anything. As far as, we just went from department head reports at the end, and then just switched to department head reports at the beginning, and...
Now you're at the end again.
Right, now we're at the end again. And to be perfectly frank, I am okay either way. But I would like to hear, you know, what you...
Andy, I want to jump in on this one. That was my fault, and I'm not going to be here after the end of the month, so put it back at the end. I don't care. But the reason, the reason it got moved to the, to the top was, for the first couple of years I was in this position, I had big department head reports, big projects coming up, you know, and project updates. And I wasn't getting them out until 9:30, 10:30 at night. I was falling asleep and running on my own report. So that was why it was moved. But if you're shortening these meetings, talking about getting out of here by 8 o'clock, put it at the front, put it at the end, it doesn't matter. But the thing is, is the department head reports were the most valuable information that we could bring to you, and everybody was falling asleep during it.
All right. You know, if I may, one more time, that's the aspect I actually didn't think of. One of the reasons we put the department head, the department head reports were decided to go at the front, y'all may have some information that would help us based on your report with what we're going through on the agenda.
I can make another suggestion, real quick, on that. Because if it's something that supports what's to be discussed by the council, then maybe we should be giving you a report before the meeting on that topic. I.e., Jan's working on the user fees for the boat ramp, right? If that's an agenda item, she needs to forward a set of notes that she would be presenting with that item.
Well, that's sort of like the agenda summary that we already do that gets published with the agenda.
Exactly.
So we don't, we try to provide as much backup as we possibly can that explains the agenda item instead of just throwing something out there and not having something that explains what it is, why it is, and what we're recommending. So, you know, I think we're already doing that. I did try today, but it was crazy to get my report out to you in advance in the meeting, so you could review it and prepare yourself if you had any questions about anything I was reporting on. And I can continue to do that and ask that any of the other department heads that have, you know, something that they want to report, to include it in that, so you kind of have a heads up what we'll talk about.
That'd be, that'd be wonderful.
That might help reduce the time it takes during department head reports. It was hit the bullet point. If y'all got questions, we can talk about it and then move on.
And I know the budget item, like what I'm going to present on Monday, I always put that out sooner, you know, typically sooner than the agenda.
Right.
For you all to look at, you know, as well as if we detect, so...
Got you. And when we go to the March schedule, that's going to be probably even better, you know, easier to accomplish.
And just keep in mind, thank you, Michelle, for pointing that out. I really wasn't thinking. When Wally says 10 or 11 things, you've got seven standard agenda items for every workshop. So if you're saying 10, that's only three more agenda items.
No, I get it.
So your, your first, one, two, three, four are standard, and your last three are standard. So that's seven things already on your agenda. So if you're going to try to limit it and say, you know, an X number, is it going to be 10 items in addition to that seven items? You know, and, you know, just like with this, in talking with the vice mayor this week, if I had to say, what could have been eliminated from this agenda? What did not have to go on this agenda? What could wait? An RFP for direct writing services, that could have waited until next month. But that was easy. It's, it's a no-brainer, if you ask me.
Mm-hmm.
Just tell us to go ahead and do what we need to do, just to solicit some, you know, RFPs for that, or solicit some proposals for that service. But we can do that. We can go through every month and sort of just say, okay, we're up to 17 items. What...
What can we put off?
What can we put off? Or, yeah.
You know, again, these are just my thoughts. And clearly, I do know there's certain items we have every month. Okay? I intentionally made those numbers low. Okay? Realizing that we're probably going to end up with more like 15 or 16. Okay? I get that. Because we've got to get business done. Okay? I'm all for that. Again, I'm just trying to get these meetings shorter. And the only thing I didn't put down was limit the amount of time each person can talk on a particular item. We have three minutes for the folks in the audience. Maybe we need to put a time limit on us as we cover these items. Now, in a workshop, I guess, let me stop right there. In a workshop, I can see how these meetings are going to go on. They just got to. Okay? Because we're trying to understand something. Hopefully, by doing things like, okay, we cover all this in a meeting, when we get to a workshop, these meetings shouldn't take that. If we cover things that have been covered in a workshop.
You're talking about your council meetings shouldn't last...
I would think the regular council meeting would not last nearly as long.
Right, I agree.
Okay, and that, I'm trying to figure out how to shorten both meetings. And clearly, if, if the workshops got to have 17 items or 20 items, and they're critical, then we just got to put them on. But hopefully, when we get to Monday's meeting this month, that, that meeting is not going to last two months. I want us out of here. Because I think it just, it wears us sitting here.
Well, and the more things you put on consent...
Right.
You know, if you vet them thoroughly during the workshop, and you're comfortable with them, you put them on consent, you approve five or six things at one time.
Right.
And, and that saves a lot of time, too.
Right. Okay. Well, just my thoughts. I heard you. We won't take public comments off anywhere.
Work in progress.
Or change anything else I say. All right. Okay, I'm done. Now, council comments. Anybody else got a comment? Put it in your hand.
Uncle, so I wanted to talk to you guys quick about a training course. It's a course offered in Orlando on the 14th of April regarding CRA. It's not like a, more like a course than a training. So it is all day. The cost of it is $495, which is a lot of money. And it is a good portion of our training, our council training budget for the year, which is $1,850. So I wanted to just ask you guys, I don't even know if it's full yet. I know the course fills fast. It's through the Florida, is it FLC?
Florida League of Cities.
Yeah, Florida League of Cities.
Yeah, Florida League of Cities. If you, if, what, what ideas there were about my going to attend this, or if it's something that we don't want to use the training budget for now, and I'll go at another time. I do think it's going to be important that we learn a little bit more about CRA and get some strategies to make it work. I'm willing to try to go to the training this year if you guys are in agreement, if you think it's something that can wait, because we're just getting organized, we're just getting a full council. I'm totally good with that as well. Thoughts?
I would think, first of all, I would give up my training time for you to go to that. Because to me, this is one of many things we have a weakness in.
Mm-hmm.
And I don't know of anything I really need to go to. And so I don't have a problem with you doing it. I don't know what you're...
I feel just like you do, Wally.
I just think CRA is something we need to spend more time and understand. And I'm not sure, turnover and everything else, we've got to handle. I have no problem at all.
Jan, thoughts? Of my using nearly $500 from the training budget?
I don't think I would be interested in attending.
Well, you're okay.
Other things? Thanks for that. I'll work on it and see if there's any spots left. Office hours last month were great. I was surprised to come in and see people were waiting to see me. So February, I'll be here February 23rd at 12:30 PM. I hope you'll come out and see me and talk about whatever matters to you. That's it. Thank you.
Finished up a basic project checklist before I sent it out to the staff and get their, get their input on it. I wanted to make sure that the council was okay, that when it gets sent out, I'll send it to Mandy. She can send it out to everybody. But I didn't want to just go off like lose candidate and work with Mandy, work with Troy, work with whoever else on this checklist, and without confirmation from y'all. So you guys are in agreement?
Totally.
Okay. And it'll get sent out, you see?
I think that would help us kind of keep things running smoothly.
Right, right. Yeah, I do also. I'm on the priority list here on admin procedures that y'all were so gracious to let me participate in. The one thing that I thought that we were going to go after sooner than later was the five-day work week. Where are we at?
I'm late. I mean, I don't, I don't care when we put it on the agenda.
Are we ready to vote for it? Monday, or...
I think there should be discussion...
I think there should be discussion and go to next month, go to March on that.
Okay, go through the March workshop, okay?
That'll work.
And then the only other one I have for admin procedure, well, let's go to the March workshop. We'll cover it then.
Okay.
Cool.
All right. I know it's been discussed many times, so.
All right, I'm good, thank you.
So what exactly are we putting on the March workshop? The discussion about five-day work week?
Yes, ma'am.
Just just that? Or did you have something else?
The other one I have, the other two that I have is define the, define how many hours are in a day. You know, what my gist is, is presently, we take holidays, and it's a ten-hour day rather than an eight-hour day. Now, if we go to a five-day work week, that's gonna take care of that. And then my third one is the tuition reimbursement policy. We need to work on that, because the one-year thing, the way it's written now, means nothing. Now, I think we need to retake, take a look at that, that policy and get it up to snuff where the language actually means something.
And all that can be handled by resolution.
Cool. I'm good, thank you.
All right, so we'll put that in March.
Cool.
Jan, you?
Nothing other than, I have a few thoughts, but I think they should wait till March with too much going on.
All right, you're tired of that. Okay, Mr. Hayen, you are up.
Yes, council, I I don't have anything on the legal board tomorrow tonight, but I was discussing with Jan as far as grants and docs, and she had some information that I can pair with.
We don't need to get three quotes right now. We just need somebody to give us a budget for the grant. So if we can contact one company, and they can tell us you'll need so much for engineering, so much for construction, you know, just broad categories, because if this project is over $35,000, we have to go out for sealed bid. So we don't want Easy Docs to disclose really any of their prices. If they can give us ballpark that we can do a broad budget for a grant, that's all we need. But we don't really need to, we don't wanna go for three companies right now, because typically, anything you do before a grant award doesn't count. So we'd have to ask those three companies again.
Yeah, I agree.
I got it, okay. Well, could you get Jan the information on that Easy Doc?
Absolutely.
And you said you had a name or something?
Bobby Anderson in Tampa, and he's gonna be in touch with me in the next couple of days.
Okay, you give that to him.
He can actually come up here
Set it up.
and see exactly where it's gonna be with pay and sales. And if he doesn't wanna get, you know, fine-tune it to where he is possibly disclosing anything that he doesn't wanna disclose, just broad enough to get us to a grant. Right, he he also mentioned to me that he can literally look at what he's done with another municipality, the exact same product, and just say, here's what it costs them. This is like comparing apples to apples.
Got it.
Council, that concludes my report.
Good, all right. Now?
That's Mayor Ma'am?
Yes, ma'am.
While while we have Andrew, it's his turn.
Andrew, is there any, we have the site plan coming up on Monday for Take Five Car Wash, quasi-judicial hearing. Is there any reason that staff should not or could not share that site plan electronically with a council member if they asked?
No, no, there's there's not, and that could all be, you know, the site plan and so forth can be, oftentimes, that's part of the agenda packet. So so that's fine. What what needs to happen, site plans being quasi-judicial, is, you know, all this stuff comes in as evidence. It has to be able to be reviewed, and anybody who's opposing it, who might be an affected party, you know, we can talk length about what an affected party is, but anybody who has a stake, who has the ability to present evidence, needs to be able to ask questions about it at the hearing. That's all that needs to happen.
But that wouldn't, by sharing that with them individually, wouldn't have, they wouldn't have to disclose any ex parte communication, or does that not qualify?
If they had communications with staff and so forth, but you'd have to disclose that, yes, but I mean, if it's a, if it's a site plan that's coming forward and it's part of the agenda packet, then, you know, it's something that can be shared with them in in that way.
Okay. And the only reason it's not being published is because of the ADA, you know, it, we can't make a site plan ADA compliant, it's nearly impossible.
It's, you have a, what's called a Jennings ordinance, so it's not necessarily presumed to be prejudicial if somebody looks at something ahead of time and it's disclosed, so you could simply say, I received the site plan ahead of time, and if, you know, a party has the ability to ask questions about that, all it did was look at the site plan that came into evidence.
Okay.
And, you know, there there shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, I just wanna make absolutely sure before I did something that got anybody in trouble.
Anything else? Okay, yes, chief?
I need clarification.
Okay.
Last two or three days, I've communicated with you a lot on police activity.
Yes, sir.
Are you saying you want me now to switch to Tim? As the, because you're gonna run for the mayor, so I'm not running, but you're gonna put in for the mayor.
Did you do law enforcement? Well, that sounded like a great one. Get off to Tim. I didn't even change that, I still had me down. But no, I I could be out for a couple of weeks, and maybe it makes sense that if you're gonna take on, you know, activities of law enforcement, I don't care. I mean, I appreciate the phone calls. Man, I didn't realize the phone calls. Just that's all I'm saying.
And and if you, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
And if you guys wanna continue your report, by all means. I understand what you're trying to do, chief, change the command type thing. And if you all wanna continue that way, then anything that comes up, or if Wally is, you know, is not available for whatever reason, I'll be the backup for that. And then if anything, I'll look at your list right now. If anything out of the ordinary or whatever, and you need help, holler. So I know we just confused ya.
Well, you may be, but I do, I'm still in limbo as to what's gonna happen and when. You just keep calling me, and when I finally can nail down this, I will let you know, and then we'll go from there.
Thank you.
Okay, sounds good, all right. Then we're at the last item, which is public comments. I just wanna remind everybody that everybody who would like to speak, you have three minutes. Please keep your comments directed not at any individual. If you wouldn't mind, and address it just to me or the council, but not to an individual, that would be great. So Mandy, is anybody signed up?
Amber Serena. Amber Serena, 11426 Southwest Hendrick Drive. I had a hard day today. I found out my daughter's best friend overdosed and passed away, so it was a tough day, so pardon me. I think we really need to focus in on our schools right now. Children are heavy on my heart tonight. You know, our Donella Middle School doesn't really make a kid feel proud to walk into that school. Our high school kids are still going to classes in portables, you know. We really need to to think about our kids and and what we wanna do for them and the morale of of this city, and how we can create right leaders. My little boys are homesick tonight. I wish I could be there with them, but the city is very important to me. I do not believe that becoming a mayor by default is something to be proud of. I think for under $5,000, we should have an election and give the people the option to choose who they want to lead. I voiced at the last meeting that there were some very unsafe conditions on our Road Hendrick Drive, and nothing got done. So I did speak with John Worrell, and within one hour, he had five men out on our street tightening all of the 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 manholes with a 20-foot drop. So I think when we say something at these meetings, that's that's really necessary and unsafe, that that should be looked at and put to priority, not just what I'm saying, but anyone. I really think going to this boat ramp situation, the the honor system is pretty archaic, and we need to really look at the kiosk situation. We can make more money doing it that way, and we can also negotiate the 50%. I mean, this is a, this is a city that needs an entrepreneur on this council. It needs a real, serious, business-minded person. And I think we need to advertise for that and hold an election. I'm not saying that I'm interested in the position. I would really rather focus on my business, which I am ready to list for sale. And I've just been offered an obscene amount of money for it. And I just want this council to know that having a fire inspector would be for a commercial building regarding the short-term rentals, violating my rights as a homeowner and my guests' privacy by asking how old the children are. It's not gonna happen, and I'm ready, and just to let you know, a lawsuit is imminent. So if that's what you wanna go into, just know you're gonna have a fight on your hands.
Okay, anybody else?
I don't have anyone else signed up or anyone on Zoom.
Oh, okay, all right. Go ahead.
Paula Rose DePaola, 12116 with Kewa Circle, Donellen. Mr. Dunn, you nailed it. I think that some of you need to use the clock when presenting an idea. I just think that maybe like if you discussed, you're presenting an idea, give yourself five minutes and then have all the discussion you want. I think sometimes when the ideas are presented, it just takes way too long. Another thing, too, is I, I wasn't gonna speak tonight, but because I sat through the whole meeting, actually, there were some really important points, so it is kind of important to listen to us at the end. The Honor Box, I used to work with Honor Boxes. The problem with Honor Boxes is you can tear off the ticket and put an empty envelope in the box, and so your windshield looks like you paid, but nobody is gonna check the windshield, go to the box, open the box, and see if there's money in it. That's number one. I worked with them, and that happened a lot. About 50% of the envelopes were empty. The other thing is, is some people don't have cash. They don't have a checkbook. The thing about a kiosk is you don't get a ticket until the money is paid. That's it. You don't get a ticket until the money is paid. There's no, there's no chance of zero dollars going in. And then also, you don't have the enticement of hit, steal, and run. These things can easily be knocked over with a car or a truck, just like, you know, ATMs can be, whatever. Boat launch, I think is a grave mistake to put the kayak ranch ramp to the left, because I am a single-boat driver, and a lot of boats pull into that area to park and go get their car. Now, unless you're gonna make the pier longer, you're gonna have people circling and circling and circling out there, and you're just gonna have a bottlenecked area if you put the kayak launch there. So I was gonna say, why not put the kayak launch on the other side where that beautiful deck is? And because there is a, there is an area where you can walk down to the water. And that's it. Thank you all for your service.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay.
I only have one more thing I have to ask you. Regarding a council person and officer's request to attend that training conference, can I put that on consent?
For her to go to that conference? Oh, absolutely.
Can I put it on consent?
Yeah, absolutely. I'm gonna speed it up. I'm all for speeding it up.
I just gotta make sure there's a spot.
Okay. I have nothing else.
Nothing else? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn this one or can we?
So moved.
Second. Second, all in favor? And we got it down, so nine o'clock.